Call the attendance.
Counselor Brown, he's here. Counselor Judith Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Brown's present. Counselor Tenere Garcia, absent. Counselor Lopez?
Here.
Counselor Robinson?
Yeah.
Counselor Recupero?
Yeah.
Counselor Vido?
Present.
Counselor DeJesus?
Present.
Counselor Havelberg? Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Nine members present, you have a call.
I have a call, can we read the call of conference?
The Chelsea City Council will hold a subcommittee on conference on Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three at six P. M. The meeting will be held in the Chelsea City Hall located at five hundred Broadway, Chelsea, Massachusetts, to discuss the proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget.
Thank you. Before I open it up, the ground rules will be, anyone, we're gonna start on the left-hand side if anybody has any questions, and we're just gonna go around, and Damali will be the last question. At this time, I'd ask the acting city manager for some opening remarks.
Hi, good evening, councilors. I think you all have before you the FY twenty-four budget. This is a book we can utilize today to walk through it. I thought it's been a few minutes, I thought it's been a few minutes introducing you, just kind of walking through the book, the first few pages of it. The budget that's proposed to you is ninety-eight point seven million dollars on the city side and a hundred and thirty-two million, three hundred thousand on the school side. So the city budget's up about just under five percent, four point nine five percent, and the school budget is up about eleven point eight percent. Most of the school budget increase is paid for from the Student Opportunity Act, which is a seven-year act, and we're in year three. So what you're, in the budget message, I introduced to you both the total budget figure and the fact that we have eleven new positions proposed in this budget. Three of those are police positions that were approved by the council back in December in order to apply for a DOJ grant. That grant has come through, that grant is on a declining basis over three years. So the, in the police department, we'll be going from a hundred and eleven officers to a hundred and fourteen officers, uniformed officers, this coming FY twenty-four. It will probably take us, and the chief can talk to this, it will probably require eight or nine months of the year before we get to the full, full complement in the police department. And other, and that's, that's getting folks selected and enrolled in the police academy and bringing them out. We'll, Ed and I will walk through with you all the new positions at the time that it comes up. Tonight, you, you have two departments that have new positions in them. You're gonna be hearing from the police department, and you're gonna be hearing from, from the auditors department. So three police officers in an auditing, a fiscal analyst to help support the forty million dollars that's in ARPA funds that are passing through our system now. So, so on page, on page two of the budget, you're gonna see a description of those eleven new positions that are described here, but we'll go into more detail when we get to those in the department, but I wanted you to understand naming the department, the positions, and the reason for them. And I, I'll, I'll turn your attention to page six, 'cause this is really where, this is a combination both of the, the expense side of how we run the city and where we think our revenues are coming from. And so on page six of this, you're gonna see in the FY twenty-four column that there's two hundred and thirty-one million that is, that is proposed on the bottom as expenses, hundred and thirty-three of that is the school department, education, the balance is the city at ninety-eight million. How we're paying for that is the top half of that grid, and where those, where we project those revenues will come from. So these are revenues that were fairly conservatively estimated, and in order to balance our budget, we're asking you to raise two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars from free cash. So it's essentially going to your checkbook to write a check to balance our budget this year. So on a budget of two hundred and thirty-one million, we're looking for the, we're looking to raise about two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars to balance that budget. So you're gonna see that in the, on the revenue column, the final figure, general free cash under FY twenty-four column, two hundred and fifty-three, eight thirty-five. So for a fairly modest amount of money, we think we can afford these eleven new positions and be able to advance some important initiatives in the city going forward. So if there are some summary figures that follow in these pages, and so I'm gonna skip right over those to page fifteen, 'cause I did wanna highlight one critical piece of our ongoing work here in the city, which is the federal funds, the American Rescue Plan funds that were awarded to the city. We were awarded forty million dollars. We've, we've allocated those in two kind of bunches of money. One is, one is twenty-five million. So what you'll see on the first page is a breakdown of, we took that twenty-five million, we supported food security, I prioritized housing, community support, mental health, public health, small business, and most of all, capital improvements. So what you'll see here is that under cap, under, out of that twenty-five million, in, in the initial decisions that we made in-house, we allocated sixteen million for capital. So the FY twenty-four CIP that you just voted last month had the last bit of that sixteen million in it. So FY twenty-four had a little over three million of ARPA funds in it to advance capital projects in FY twenty-four next year. And then this, in FY twenty-three, we had the bulk of that, the balance of that sixteen million, and we put some in FY twenty-two. So the twenty-two CIP, the twenty-three CIP, and the twenty-four that's coming up, we have now allocated sixteen million of the twenty-five million to capital projects here in the city. It's one of the reasons in FY twenty-four, we had so many projects in there, 'cause we could drive it, but we were also able to have enough free cash that in FY twenty-four CIP, we didn't have to borrow any money. So generally, we would go, or historically, we would go to the general obligation market and issue bonds to help support our capital projects. This upcoming CIP, we didn't need to, we neither needed to raise bond money, and we got to add these other capital projects to that project funded by ARPA. So if you move to the next page, you're gonna see a column with community projects, fifteen million. Those are the projects that we went to, we went out into the community and held an extensive series of community meetings. There were decisions made in those meetings on hot, what categories to allocate these funds. You'll see that it's in housing, workforce, food security, mental health, small business, and environmental health. And you'll see the approximate allocations that the participants in that meeting worked with us to allocate the fifteen million dollars. So those are projects that are currently moving through either, we're identifying initiatives. When we went through, in the community process, there were different initiatives in each of these categories that were described, and we are now formulating strategies for how to, how to program that money. So you're, we can give you an update on that ARPA, on that fifteen million of how that is being translated into projects, both programs and projects, but I wanted you to know that that's all happening behind the scenes. And so one of the reasons we need another fiscal analyst in, in auditing this coming year is this is a lot of money to move through our system, a lot of, a lot of procurements to do, a lot of awards, and then a lot of contracts and bill paying. And so we've had to build a little more capacity in City Hall in order to be able to keep this money, get it out the door, and effectively monitored, and the outcomes achieved. So what you will see is that by federal government standards, we have to expend ARPA funds, we have to obligate them by December of two thousand twenty-four. We'll be well ahead of that schedule, we should be near obligating our money all in this calendar year. And then we have to expend those funds by the end of two thousand twenty-six. So we're well on our path to doing that, into moving the money out to make it work in the community, and that was our goal, to both hit the areas that the community have told us they want us to focus on, and then be able to move it ahead and move it out there and make it work. So, so that's, you have the budget, and we have a little bit of a talk on the, on ARPA, but tonight, the focus is on the budget. So to that end, I'll just sort of, you know, big view here is, is sort of, there are a number of departments you're gonna be hearing from over the next three nights, and they're all listed in this index. And in the first column of the index are the page numbers that you'll find the items in the book. So if you're, if you're, if you're, just to guide you along, that's where you turn to see each department. The quick reference is really on this index, okay? So tonight, tonight, you're gonna be hearing from eight or nine departments. Yes. So we have our, our department directors here to, to speak to, you can ask questions directly to. Ed will give you, the auditor will give you an introduction to their budgets and a little bit of a sense of the changes in the budget. And I'd just bring your attention to, you know, on the big view, we have a lot of departments here, and, but two of the departments constitute twenty-five percent of our budget, fire and police. So we have a ninety-eight, you know, just about a ninety-eight million dollar budget, and just about twenty-five percent of that is fire and police. So we'll, we thought we'd kick off this evening with the law department, so Ed?
Thank you, Ned. My name is Ed Dunn, I'm the city auditor. I'm happy to be here to walk you through our budget and to answer any questions that you may have to help you to better understand what we have proposed for you tonight. The, the first apartment up is the law department, they have three divisions that Cheryl Watson-Fisher, our city solicitor oversees, that's the law department, the judgments, and the licensing department. So I thought what we would do is go through each of those individually, and then have you ask the questions that you'd like at the end of each one. So turning to page seventy-nine, seventy-nine is the personnel section of the law department's budget. So the salaries for this department come from two sources. There is two hundred and eighty thousand, sorry, two hundred and eighty thousand from the city general fund, that's sixty percent of the salaries, and a hundred and eighty is coming from the school department, and that's forty percent. So the school department, you heard from a couple of weeks ago, when they introduced their budget, the hundred and eighty thousand dollars school contribution is in their budget, it's part of the general fund, but it's on the school side. So this two eighty and one eighty constitutes the total salary budget for the law department. On the operations side, there are minimal changes, there's some reallocation of funds between lines on the operations side, so there's, there's nothing major there going on. So at this point, I'd introduce Cheryl Fisher to give you her comments on her budget.
Hi, councilors. So I just, I wanted to point out that the law department, if you can notice the department at a glance where they show two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, we've had an increase in litigation this year, in all kinds of litigation, from appeal of denial of firearm licenses to thirty-five-year-old sexual assaults. So it's a big, big litigation going forward. Some employee matters are also pending. My office attempts to handle in-house as much as possible. As you know, we also do the public records request, which is busy all day long, every day. I believe we have a good system online now where we can refer requests to the departments, the departments send it to us, we make sure we don't send out anything that's private or privileged, and we, we send it out. Sometimes somebody goes to the state on us 'cause we weren't as quick as they wanted us to be, but we're a city, we're trying to get the responses out as quick as possible. The law department also, in conjunction with the licensing, have hired some new employees this year, we had a retirement, and we also have a new attorney, which you all know, recently, Peter Christopher. So we've had some new hires in our office. We get a lot of forty-U appeals. We find that the new hire does the forty-U appeals 'cause they get to know Chelsea, they get to know the cities, they get to know the landlords, they get to know the tenants, they get to know some of the rules and regulations, so, and it's busy, it's every day, all day long. We also do the in-house investigations on the law department, whether it's a resident complaining about a staff, or staffs complaining about staff. We do the Title IX investigations for the school department. That's a lot. That's when I review bullying reports and think that it's a violation of someone's civil rights, we open that up, we meet with children, we meet with parents. We probably speak to parents a little bit more than I would prefer, but we do meet with the parents because we need to make sure that their behaviors are similar to their child's behavior when it's on a school campus. We've had a lot of mental health issues. One of the goals this year is my staff and I have decided that we might need some mental health training to deal with the public, because we get a lot of irate people on their parking appeals and so forth and so on, so we're discussing how to better respond to upset customers and upset parents that come up to the third floor screaming and shouting. So that's a highlight that going forward, that's a lot of apartment. We've accomplished a lot, we get money on the opioid settlement, actually more of that's coming in. We've accomplished quite a few ordinances and tried to enforce these affordable deed restrictions. It's tough, everybody wants affordable housing, not necessarily, a lot of the developers saw the negotiations back and forth in my office, making sure these things are recorded and for life in perpetuity, so that we can maintain our affordable housing goals, which I believe is a goal of some of the city councilors and a priority. And so my office is constantly engaged in making sure that all contracts fall in line with the council's priorities.
So do we have any questions on the law department section?
We'll start on the left, you have any questions?
Thank you, guys. My question is brief. I just would like to know how much, or how many times the law department is at the Chelsea Court for housing-related issues.
So it depends on the related issues. For receivership, that's the law department, that's when we're taking a property for receivership. We, we in Chelsea Court for enforcement matters, violations of our city code, we're there, both my associates go quite a bit, we go there for the appeals. After they don't like the fact that we didn't overturn their forty-U ticket, they can go to court. A lot of our, our police department appeals on license to carry, that's in Chelsea District Court. Do we do the housing enforcement when there's an order by Inspeccional Services? Not a lot of property owners actually appeal those, but if they're appealed, we will go there. So the court works with us, they'll put everything on a Friday afternoon, of course, when we're not open, but the court will call us up and say we're gonna try to schedule everything that day for Chelsea. My staff has attended housing court whenever requested, whenever a staff person asks us to attend. So we're not in Chelsea District Court as much as we are probably in Suffolk Superior Court a lot more on the higher level, zoning appeals, et cetera.
Thank you, Cheryl. And you mentioned that the most appeals you get are the forty-U tickets, and that is code violation, or?
Yes, so that would be the sanitary code violations, the trash tickets, the snow tickets, the failure to correct an order, there's moisture and they didn't correct it within the allotted time by Inspeccional Services, they get a ticket, they appeal the tickets to Chelsea District Court, my office defends the ticket.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, thanks for being here again. We know this is a tough time, and we always try to get through it as fast and sufficient as we can. I just saw on this here, I saw the litigation, you talked about that matter, but the municipal appeals here, it's, it's down significant, and I'm wondering if, is it an issue where some of these cases are not considered legal matters when they are brought before you?
No, it just means the landlords are paying the tickets, so they're not appealing the tickets. It's based on how many tickets are issued, so that just means that those are the type of appeals that we receive, the forty-U tickets, we get those appealed. We also get the fire department, when they issue, that would be a municipal appeal, my office handles that. So it just means who's appealing them. Sometimes landlords will work with the departments to correct and seek a little bit more time and pay the tickets.
So I heard you say that in your comments, so last part of that, is that, does that mean that they're in good standing with their operational of their homes, and also once the, they pay these appeals?
So that means most have complied with what the Inspeccional Services Department has issued a ticket for. So single families, when an elderly person lives alone, they're not necessarily inspected. So we inspect rental units, the fire department will go in if there's an issue, and then we might see it, but do I know if they're in good standing? I always think good standing is do they owe the city money, that's what my office looks at, right?
If I could just object in here, I'm sorry, counselor. If I could just say, so mine's is that, you know, we, we hear residents come before us and they say, you know, once they pay these fines, that these appeals, then they don't worry about the path, the issues that's facing the residence, and it goes away until they get another ticket and they have to go back. So that's what I was meaning just to get standing about.
So what I can tell you, the sanitary code requires minimum work. Minimum work means if there's moisture, it doesn't include mold, it includes moisture. So once they stop the moisture, that is no longer a violation. So do I think the landlord's doing everything they could do? No. But do I think they've, they've resolved the code violation? Yes. So those are two different things. So when you file a housing complaint, it is open un, I, I'm assuming, it is open until all the violations are corrected.
Okay.
That does not mean that an individual tenant believes that their home is habitable. That just means it meets the city's ordinance and the sanitary code.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Counselor Taylor, we're going this way, counselor. Counselor Recupero?
I heard that they increased the fines, or that they, not really increased the fines, that when you go and apply for a license, it increased from fifty to seventy-five, is that true?
So during COVID, it temporarily went down to fifty dollars. So it wasn't really an increase, it went back to what it was. It was always seventy-five dollars since it was in my office. So certain licenses, each license is different, the special event is still zero, I think amusement and entertainment went back to seventy-five dollars for one day, so it depends on what you're applying for. Liquor licenses have not gone up yet. I'm not sure about the tobacco, I believe it stayed the same this year, so we are not trying to hit the businesses, but we did go back to the amounts that were being paid prior to two thousand twenty when we shut down.
Counselor Lopez? Counselor Damali? Before you run, do, do we have enough money actually in legal services with some of the outstanding suits that we have pending?
So for the rest of this fiscal year, I believe I have an ask before the councilors as to two major issues. We actually owe a law firm since the end of, I probably owe the January bill, we've just been waiting for free cash. I believe what we've requested should be able to pay that law firm that's handling one particular crazy matter in two different courts, and then we recently received that big thirty-five-year-old matter that we did not have in our budget for this year, so we've requested funds to help us pay that also. So I believe the current financial ask that is before you for free cash appropriation, it should suffice until the end of this fiscal year.
And what effect does that have on our insurance on these cases?
So the auditor is aware of the potential risk of defending these cases, whether or not they would go, the auditor always asks if it's gonna go over a certain amount. Clearly, employment matters, get interest in them, if we lose, we had suspended someone, I guess, for quite a while. And then the other matter, I'm confident that we're gonna win early on that case, but it is thirty-five years old, it's gonna be very difficult to find discovery and do depositions, et cetera, people who may or may not be alive today, but I believe we're, we're okay right now, it may affect FY twenty-five if it goes forward.
All right, thank you. Do you have another question, counselor?
Yes, one more. I spoke to you before about the paper permits, right? Over here, I see all the new regulations will be in effect until you said, some timeline, September first, two thousand twenty, twenty-three. So I was wondering, how fast would your, your department be able to put paper for the people that want paper, instead of applying on the computer?
So actually, when you called last week, counselor, we did it, so we now have one, I, I told one counselor that they can come to my office tomorrow afternoon and get the applications. So the only application that's not in paper is the special permit application that, that is in response to the new ordinance. So the streamlining was that people wouldn't have to run around City Hall, they could just do it on the computer and it goes to departments. We finished that in time for the spring season, we just didn't do a paper copy yet to figure out how to do that paper copy, but we could, we could, my staff was, is prepared to, to give a paper copy. What we do is people who don't wish to do it online, they can come up, sit down with my staff person, they will type it in for them. So that's where we're at, we, we're, we're gonna try to meet everybody's needs. The only way to do what? No, I, I mean, we could download it online, too, we just, we just didn't do the paper copy yet. So some of the paper applications are online still from when we had them before.
It just doesn't seem really accessible. If someone doesn't, if someone doesn't have the know-how or can go online and wants to file for a paper permit, your office is not accessible at all. And so I'm just curious if there's another way, maybe the, the greeters or something.
So usually what a greeter would do if someone can't walk up the steps, they will call my office, and one of my staff people will run down with whatever they need, a piece of paper, or bring a pad of paper to write out their public records request, 'cause we have that in writing also, that you can handwrite everything.
So they can actually get a paper copy?
Yes.
All right, so you know other questions, thank you.
Well, the next, the next section under Cheryl will be judgments, so if you turn to page two thirty-five, two, three, five in the book, judgments, Department nine forty-one, this is the section of our budget that funds legal claims and settlements. It is funded at fifty thousand dollars. The Department of Revenue allows for certain lines in our budget to go into legal deficit, this is one of those lines. In the past, we have gone to free cash to supplement because we don't wish to close the books with a deficit, but the DOR would allow it if we wanted to. There are minimal changes here, I think it's about forty-five thousand that's been spent so- I think it's about $45,000 that's been spent so far this year. And Cheryl mentioned some supplements that may be coming to you in the next two meetings, within the next two meetings. But we're comfortable with this number as is. Do you have questions on judgments?
Any questions on the left? Any questions on the right?
Okay.
Seeing none, thank you.
Okay, so then the last department for Cheryl is licensing. So if you turn to page 101 in the book, 101 for licensing. A few pages beyond the title page, you'll see on page 103, the regular salaries. This budget is up $5,600. And that's 8.3%. That's a higher percent than normal. And the reason for that is that there was a reclassification of the one staff member in this department last year. So the percentage that you see compares the FY '23 adopted number to the FY '24 proposed number. So the adopted number in '23 was the salary before the reclass. So that's the reason why that number is a little bit higher than what you'll normally see with other departments. There are some increases in advertising and inducend subscriptions. These had to do with licensing board hearings and online license applications. So will entertain any questions on the licensing department?
No questions on the left, any questions on?
So the restaff, was that from the staff member that came from Department of Public Works?
No. So what happened was, there was a reclassification on the licensing administrator whereby she also works with the community service administrator for enforcement of some of our rules and regulations and communication with our businesses. So as we left COVID, never mind, she was doing a lot of different stuff during COVID. We reclassified both positions so that we get someone to walk in and say, you know, you need to apply for this. Instead of trying to hit them with late fees and fines, we tried to get the restaurants and the businesses back on par. We also now have that new special events ordinance which has changed things. We have a vendor registration now. It's not, so you're not confused about open or transient vendors. We have, she also deals with the special permits, but she issues the entertainment, the liquor license, et cetera. We have a lot going on in our public spaces. She's done a lot to change things and now we're working on a marketplace for vendors that will be happening on the lawn. And my staff, legal and licensing, we're going to be working on how to train people on how to do these new food adventures. If you notice in Chelsea, people want to sell food, but you just can't do that, right? So there's a lot of state laws around it. So we were going to put together a training with the chamber and I've contacted La Color Bautiva just to work, we've got community kitchens now and green roots. It's nice you have a kitchen, but you've got to know how to get your license, how to get your permit, where you can do this and so forth and so on. So we're trying to coordinate that effort to get it at the beginning before everyone starts cooking up a storm and wanting to sell their foods.
Questions on the right? Counselor Cooperall.
On this, the salary, right, that's, who's in charge of that? Does it get split between all of yous or one particular person gets that?
So that is bargaining unit salary. That would be on the scale of the steelworkers and just one employee gets that.
So one employee, so that means the scale you have on this side, that that added to the money they make on that side too?
So licensing has its own budget?
No, if you're looking at page 103, it shows the adopted budget compared to the proposed budget. On page 104, you'll notice that that's the indication of who the staff members are. So in this particular case, on this budget, there's only one staff member.
That's a different person altogether than your staff, right?
No, this is the person who receives that.
She works for you?
Yes.
She's on your department?
Yes.
So this is her only salary?
Yes, one person in this department.
Okay, no more questions? I was just wondering, since it's under you, this person, whoever she is, works for you too, right? But in a different capacity?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Oh, I'm done.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Oh, thank you.
Patrice Montefusco is the treasurer for the city of Chelsea and she's next on your agenda. If you turn to page 68, you will see the treasurer's goals, objectives, structure of their department, their budget and pay scale for each employee in the department. The treasurer also oversees liability insurance and also runs the payroll division of two people. So you'll be hearing from her on those two other issues as well. But we'll begin with the Treasury Department first.
Okay, so on page 70, you'll notice the outline of the entire budget. So the regular salaries are up 5%. There are seven staff members that report to Patrice or they're funded by the treasurer's office budget. Those percentage increases are due to collective bargaining agreements that are in place for FY '24. There's only minimal change on the operations lines with tax title being the most significant of that, with an increase of $6,000. The overall budget is up 4.3%. Patrice Montefusco is here with us. She'll answer any questions you have on the treasurer's budget.
Calibron.
I read in your accomplishments statement, you talked about this program, the update on the payment plan. Can you tell us about that? The payment plan that you was asking the revenue?
That's anybody in tax title? So after you go from real estate into tax title, anybody over $5,000 goes out to our outside attorney. Anybody under $5,000 stays with the city. We try to get them into a payment plan before they go to the outside attorney because the fees get too high for them. So we work with them. They put a down payment of 10% down and each month they pay us accordingly.
And how's that working out?
Very well, very well.
And thank you, thank you again for giving.
On the right? Counselor Haddelberg?
I do have, it's almost as much an operational question, but just looking at some of the sort of regional bank situations that are happening right now out there. Could you just give us a two-second sense for whether anything is changing within the department about where we keep our money? Do we have any concerns about liquidity, our ability to access funds? What are we doing in the current environment? Anything different? Just as a general question at this time?
Most of our funds are very liquid. We can liquidate them as soon as possible. Some funds we have in CDs, we are federally insured under everything and we have collateral agreements each month we get from our banks. And we keep everything up and up because we have legal requirements. If we have any money, it would mostly go to the MMDT municipal. It goes to the municipal where all the other cities and towns put their funds.
Judith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you so much for being here, for taking the time. My question is, on page 70, I see there's a 60% increase. There's a 60% change on the tax title charges. Can you walk me through that?
That's actually a software change with the company. Their software is changing, so they're upgrading. So we have to increase our budget for their fees.
Okay, and that software, is it public-facing? So can, do residents use it or is it just internal?
Just internal.
Okay, so that was just a price increase. Awesome, thank you.
Questions on the right? Seeing none?
Okay, we'll then turn to page 236, 236, that's the liability insurance section. The proposal for FY '24 is to fund at $960,000. This is a 12% increase over FY '23. This is the line that funds our liability insurance for vehicles and buildings. Do we have any questions here?
Counselor Todd?
So we're self-insured, right, for liability? No, we have a policy? And so have we had a lot of claims? Is that why there's such a steady increase from '22 to '23 to '24?
It's just right now, it's the business. Everything has gone up and 12% is on average right now. Last year, I think it was 11% and this year it's gone up another additional 1%. It's the economy.
So no problem with the loss runs or anything? It's just the price of doing business?
The primary increase has been in motor vehicles. So I think there's not a huge marketplace for municipal insurance, for general liability. And so we go out into the market every year. We go to the, and we price with insurance companies that will offer insurance to municipal markets. And I think we've been with the same insurer for several years, probably three to five years running right now. But, and I think Patrice will share this, the major increases have been in the motor vehicle section.
I see. So we are only self-insured for workman's comp?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a question, Cal? Counselor Haddelberg?
Todd pretty much asked my question, but just to ask a little further detail. Do they give us any sort of business planning? Are there any modifications we can do that help limit our liability costs? You know, often insurers will get a little bit involved in operations and have recommendations. Are there any choices we have made that, you know, we believe makes sense to go one direction, but it might cost us less, you know, is there any big picture thing? Have we looked into anything that does save us any money structurally?
We've made some selective decisions around increasing deductibles because we haven't had much exposure in those areas or many claims. So I'd say that's probably the place where we've moved the most. You might ask, well, if we're up in, you know, motor vehicles, that's because we're either hitting things or things are hitting us. And so driver training, things like that are good things to do. And I'll take your suggestion on that, actually. They have come in and suggested different approaches when we have seen increases. And we could probably engage with them more on that.
I want to know specifically, when we talk about liability in motor vehicles, what are we talking about? Are we talking about potholes? Are we talking about hit and runs?
No, we insure every vehicle, police cars.
Oh, so you're talking about, okay.
We're actually, we're insuring police cars and fire vehicles and DBW vehicles. All of that, all of those items, so in the same way that if you have a fender bender with somebody, we do too. We insure all our buildings. We buy our insurance with the school department. So we're moving our entire real estate portfolio out into the marketplace to get the best pricing we can. We do it together in sync with them. And, but, you know, we don't have many, frankly, building claims, very, very few. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the third department for Patrice is page 72 on the payroll division. So if you turn a couple of pages past that, page 74 shows the regular salary decrease of $13,000. That is, you'll see the two staff members on the next page, page 75, that lists out the two staff members. These are new to the department from a year ago. So the, again, the budget is comparing '23's adopted to '24's proposed. And '23's adopted contained two individuals that had higher salaries who have since resigned. And so the two new individuals that are here are coming in at a lower step in their grade structure. The operations section of this department is up in a couple of places. In conference and travel, you'll see an increase of a $4,500 amount. And this is due to proposals for new employee payroll certifications of both of the individuals in this department. Overall, the budget is down in salaries and up about 5% in operations.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Okay, thank you, Patrice.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
I mentioned earlier, the procurement department is, we run through the procurement department every single city procurement. So whether we're buying off the general ledger or buying through ARPA, we are both issuing bids and/or requests for proposals or requests for quotes. These are publicly, many of these are publicly advertised bids. And Dragica oversees this entire process with us from procurement, working with the departments, defining the procurement need, to selecting submitters when they do submit and then executing contracts on the backend and then encumbering our funds on those contracts. So she is able and skilled and runs a tight department. This year, we added one additional staff person to the procurement department, paid for by the school department. And this was recognition that we consolidate, so we're not running two procurement teams. We consolidate the school department operations with the city and we think we get a lot of bang for that buck. And, but the volume of work moving through the school system and moving through the city was simply, Dragica could have done it, but it would have killed me to watch her work that especially hard over what she works anyway. So, anyway, Ed can walk you through the budget.
Yes, thank you, Ned. If you turn to page, it starts on page 59, but two pages after that, page 61. Page 61, you'll see the outline for the percentage of change in the '24 proposal. Ned mentioned that there is one position funded by the school department exclusively. This department has three staff members. One is funded by schools. So when you heard from the schools two weeks ago, the percentage of the pay that is associated with that third person, which is on page 62, that's $78,000 is part of the school department general fund. The amounts at the top, $130, sorry, $158,000 is funded on general fund city. That's the two positions above, the procurement officer and the office manager. Longevity is also up on this department. There was a transfer into the department from a school department employee who has been with the city for 20-plus years. So her longevity transfers in with her as well. There are minimal increases in operations. The overall budget is up 4.25%.
Any questions left or right?
I have a question. I remember last year when this department came before us, there was some talk about implementing the DEI aspects and I'm just curious about how that has gone through, if we've been successful.
I was involved with Dr. Kenneth and it's, I think we pushed it a little bit aside for now because we're also looking into our financial system. Munis to see what capability we can incorporate rather than the only option for us if we do it. Once we develop that form, would be keep up with the Excel spreadsheets for reports. But Munis might give us better reports. So we will, we will look into that.
I'm glad that it's still one of the main goals.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, have a good one.
The, Jim Sullivan is here, that's the assessing department. Jim came on this year as our chief assessor. He was our assistant assessor prior. And behind him, Jim has been able to hire an assistant assessor. He's also this year brought on a data analyst, a data collector, analyst, field person for field work. And is rebuilding, there was a change in the business manager there. So he's rebuilding the business manager side of things in assessing as well. So for the first time in probably five years, four years, we have a full complement of trained staff in the assessing department. And this is a real pleasure to work with Jim and have him lead this team. There's a lot of enthusiasm down there and a lot of smarts and expertise. So we hope, I depend on Jim, we all depend on Jim to generate the assess, assessments here, which form our tax, taxable base here in the city. And that's a big piece of our budget every year. So it's both what are properties here worth? And also capturing new growth. So that we're able to identify aspects of when a new, for example, a new apartment building is built here, Jim is capturing that value during the time that it's being built. So that we are, we are realizing that increase in value during the construction period and also when it's delivered to us. These are important aspects of how to keep the engine of tax revenue running for us so that we can pay our expenses, so. Thank you, Ned. The assessors department starts on page sixty-three. Turn a few pages past that and you'll see the detail of employees on page sixty-seven. There are five full-time employees that, as Ned mentioned, there is some rebuilding going on in this department. One staff member is an existing employee who transferred into the department as an administrative person, business manager, and is taking with her the longevity that she earned from the previous department. So you'll see an increase in longevity while there are decreases in salary. In the operations section, there are several lines showing increases. Appraisal Services is one of those with an increase of eighty-four thousand. With revaluations coming in fiscal twenty-four, that's the reason for this large of an increase. In the capital section, which is on page sixty-six, the last item on the page, there's a thousand dollars funded and that's for a timestamp machine that the department has a need for. Want to entertain any questions for Jim?
Any questions?
The overlay is not in, in this department, it's actually off, off book. It's not part of the general fund. It's differently. Say again? Uh, yeah.
Should I ask for an update while the assessor's here just on how we're...
You, you can.
Just give me a big picture, two second overview, how we're looking in terms of challenges and how we're looking.
With the, with the overlay, we had some challenges last year.
Can we rephrase the question for those of us that don't know what you're talking about?
Sure, the overlay, so basically, we can make a mistake on assessments. So let's say we assess a property for a large amount of money. They challenge it. The overlay account sets aside money to pay them if we miss. And then you can run a surplus in there, which then you can draw from too. So we, we could be either direction on it. We might have too much or too little and the assessor can...
I'm prepared to receive the answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So last year with the overlay, we had a large issue with abatements. We led to state the number of abatements in court cases. So we had over two-hundred pending cases at the ATB and about a hundred and eighty-five abatements last year and a hundred and thirty-five this year. All, shouldn't say all, but majority of them are coming from low-income tax credit properties. And those were refunded based upon a court case. So when the, the court case settled, lawyers came and filed everything to get their cap rates changed and expense ratios that would revalue the buildings resulted in a few million dollars going out in abatements. Because Chelsea's has a large number of low-income tax credit properties and they were all, they were all abated based upon that finding.
So then we had to fund that?
Out of the overlay.
Out of the overlay, and then where does it stand now?
Right now about three and a half million dollars.
Okay, cool.
Counselor Cooper.
How many times are we gonna, each year we're gonna assess all the houses plus all the businesses? Is that annually now? Going to be annual at a hundred percent? Or is it going to be a little less than a hundred percent of value?
Every year, all properties are revalued. According to state standards, you have to come in between ninety to a hundred and ten percent assessment value, uh, sales ratios for the properties. So every year you will be reassessed. Most of the times for most properties, including all the residential last year, you, most of the bump is just in a market change. Essentially, what a bank would call a time adjustment. So if the market appreciated a couple of points, you would appreciate a couple of points based on your property. The only thing that would raise your value in properties is if you put in an addition, did something like that, changed, changed it, the structure, the use change. And if, in, in some cases in the past, values were very low, we raise them up to where the market should be.
So, here's a hypothetical question. Do they ever go down? Let's say your house is worth eight hundred thousand. And the following year, your house is worth seven hundred thousand. Do the assessors compensate for that?
Yes, the, the values, so we're one year behind on all the valuations. So for fiscal year twenty-three, the data value is January first twenty-two and the, based on twenty-one sales. So we're a little bit behind. That's the way it works in everyone, the effective date is always January first. But if the values go down, the assessments will go down. But unfortunately, most likely, in most cases, the tax rate would go up to compensate, to make, make room for that budget.
One more question, that's all I had.
I just want to give kudos for identifying folks that qualify for the exemption. Because I know that's not been an easy feat trying to reach folks, so I, I'm really excited about that. I don't have any questions though.
Can, can you just give us an overview of the lots? I know we, we hear about a lot of lots. Can you give us an overview about the evaluations on any of the lots we have available here in Chelsea?
I'm sorry, the lots?
The lots, the lots.
The lots in value?
Yeah. Do you do the evaluation on those lots? People come in and say, look, it's not a really big lot. The closest neighbor wanted buyer. How do we get that evaluation?
Oh, if, if somebody buys in a budding property like a neighbor? Those are discounted because the motivation's different. Somebody could take that parcel that doesn't have the same value as somebody else and assemble it and get it, get a buildable parcel. So they're usually sold at different values to budding properties. So there are codes that you can do to discount, to discredit sales. If you sell it to a family member, they don't go into the equation. When we do evaluations, only based upon arms-length transaction from the market. An arms-length transaction, meaning it's two disinterested parties, or two parties coming to a mutual agreement upon price. So it doesn't have any undue influence of, of one relative to another or one neighbor to another who could get a discount and skew the data for the other, for the other folks. Because there was an issue before, some butters sold their properties, would appear to be a high number. It wasn't, it was just what the accountant, their accountant put on it, which would have artificially inflated some values on Essex and Suffolk Street for three, three families, which would have been completely unfair. So we discredit those sales completely. So again, it doesn't impact adversely to the taxpayers.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I guess we've danced around this, you and I, for, I don't know, a number of years, back and forth. The actual person who owns a legitimate four-family compared to the affordable unit, the price and tax is pretty different. And it always seems that the nonprofit entities are the ones who are hitting us for the larger abatements. I know last year we returned two million to one of the agencies. And I know they have thirty abatements and now. And we talked about, part of that is from the lawsuit that happened in Worcester years ago.
Yes.
Where nobody, where nobody was buying property in Worcester. And now that, that has changed. And I think that we as a city should be in a situation to challenge the court in regards to what we should really be getting in taxes compared to what we're not getting.
Because I know right now, earlier today, I was looking at some of the three families. And the low-income tax credit properties for three families are valued about fifty percent of a typical three-family.
Quite a difference. Yes. Any other questions? Seeing none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Quite a difference.
Dr. Perez, hello. You'll remember the DEI is one of our newest departments. And so we're happy to give you an update on what's been happening here. If you'll turn to page eighty-five, you'll see a summary of depart, if you turn to page eighty-five, you'll see a summary of department initiatives, accomplishments, goals, and also the budget. So Ed will introduce you first to the budget and then you can talk about other aspects of the department's mission. Thank you, Ned. If you turn to page eighty-seven, eighty-seven will show you the grid for the FY twenty-four proposed budget. There is no change in salaries. That is because Candace is an exempt employee. And there are three groups that have not had their FY twenty-four salary percentages assigned. The steelworkers is one group, the Ask Me Library is another, and the exempt staff usually happens after all the others have settled. So we'll be talking about the salary reserve later on and I'll get into more detail there. But that's why you see a zero percent increase, because Candace is an exempt employee. Under the operations section, there is an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars to fifty thousand on contract services. Candace can talk about that more. There has also been a grant and some grant funds that she was able to, to use to secure in FY twenty-three. So with that, I'll turn it over to Candace.
Thank you. It's good to see everybody tonight. I know ninety-nine percent of you, Brian, I haven't met you officially. I'm Dr. Candace Perez, I'm the director of DEI here at Chelsea. So the Department of DEI performs a critical role within the operations of the city. In addition to creating best practices to enhance workplace engagement, our department performs outreach to various community and business organizations. And these interventions are put into practice to not only increase inclusive employment opportunities, but also to create intersectional collaboration with external business partners with the goal of positively increasing and affirming Chelsea's visibility both locally and nationally. While our department required the use of encumbered funds in twenty-twenty-two, due to having narrowly missed the previous year's deadline to exhaust the initial budget, additionally attributed funds were not required in this past year. This is largely due in part to a fifty thousand dollar state grant, which allowed for the contracting of external vendors, including a consultant and a web developer. This fiscal year's budget will also require a similar need, which tallies up to around a hundred thousand dollars in vendor services. However, similar to last year, I will rely heavily on externally awarded grant money and grant funding, excuse me, in order to execute our program's goals. Within fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, the Department of DEI completed the inaugural citywide equity audit as directed by Governor Healy, directed all of the agencies under her administration to conduct a comprehensive equity audit in order to break down barriers, to make sure that those who have been marginalized for far too long, those who are suffering disproportionate and disparate impacts across any number of realms. Some of the key takeaways from our audit demonstrate that top management demonstrates a commitment to DEI. Research shows that this is the single greatest determinant of DEI's success. Additionally, the DEI initiatives already in place are researched best practices. Some recommended next steps are already underway, such as the demographic dashboard, which will become live this summer, and showing benefit accrual on pay stubs. That's just, you know, an example. Conclusively, management and staff agree on the main issues, which largely center around access to clear information, policies, and procedures. One major goal for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four is the overhauling of Chelsea's diversity supplier strategy, which dovetails back, Damali, to the program that I will be working collaboratively with Bubba on, on procurement. This will require the execution of a disparity study to assess whether any barriers exist that make it harder for minority and woman-owned businesses to compete for city contracts and procurement. Such an intervention will set the necessary foundational framework for a sheltered market program. And I know that, for example, the city of Boston had undertaken a similar disparity study and it took them, I don't know, two to three years to finish it. And since we here in Chelsea are a little bit more condensed, I think that that's something that we can realistically look forward to completing in a, you know, about a, you know, fiscal year or so, give or take a few months. And that was the end of my remarks.
So a comment followed with a question. So very impressive, congratulations for the work.
Thank you.
It's out, it, it looks like you're a one-person show and you're a one-person office. And just reading even the work you've done with the library and focusing and making it a little more inclusive and more representative of, of our kids. But I also really want to highlight the fact that, you know, the fact that you had ninety percent of managers and department head show up to some of these trainings is huge. I guess my, my question for you, considering all the goals that you've set yourself with, your timelines that, I, I can't wait to see the dashboards and really explore that. One, question one, I see that the only salary we have here is yours and some contract services. It sounds like you're contracting out to help you get this done. Are you looking to bring someone in under your office?
Thank you, that's a, that's a terrific question. So honestly, the next FTE that I would ideally like to fill would be an analyst. Because the great bulk of equity and inclusivity is being able to tally the numbers and report that out on an objective viewpoint. So I think being able to have a full-time analyst, you know, as part of my staff, will be able to monitor the dashboard. And that will also be able to liaise with other departments, especially with human resources, which does field a good number of, whether it's complaints or inquiries. I know that there is a bi-annual EOC reporting that, you know, can dovetail with the work that we've done on the dashboard. So especially with the hiring increases that, that are taking place here in Chelsea. So that would be my first hire, would be an analyst. And I think from there, it would probably be on a needs-based, you know? So right now, the contracts are, are helping to get a, a large part of the work done.
Okay, so the full-time employee would allow you to keep the dashboard live?
Yeah.
And not a shelfware?
Really, yeah, and, and analyze, you know, the, the metrics, whether it's, you know, onboarding, employee retention, you know, the, the work that we're doing in equity with procurement. And a lot of it really does come down to the numbers. So Bubba alluded to, you know, wanting to have a form on hand. And simply put, she doesn't really have the bandwidth to be able to go in and tell you, oh, well, this amount of women-owned businesses, these are amount of, you know, women-owned Hispanic businesses, women-owned black businesses. She just simply doesn't have that bandwidth. So, you know, having that liaison who can, you know, help us to begin to dig through that and then make it make sense, and then in conjunction with a disparity study, put together that sheltered market program and have someone full-time who can do that analysis while I push through with training and, you know, policy and assisting and all these things.
Well, you're doing a remarkable job.
Thank you so much.
Senator Eric Garcia.
So I know that you had mentioned, good evening, everyone. I know that you had mentioned that you're gonna need someone to help you... I know that you had mentioned that you're gonna need someone to help you analyze data and how are you doing that right now and what are your, how are you measuring what your goal is?
Honestly, right now, that with the objective viewpoint of, you know, I mentioned that I contracted a web developer. So a lot of the data that I've been aggregating has been, is being funneled on the backend and I can't speak highly enough of, well, all of my colleagues, but I mean Ramon's staff, chef's kiss. So Denise and I are working like this. So she has been really a huge resource for me. IT, I mean, they are, you know how tightly they are pulled and she basically is my go-to person as far as assisting with the data analysis. But with that being said, she's not my analyst, you know. That's Ramon's staff. So being cognizant and considerate of that, I know that that's not a full-time option and she is essentially, you know, being collaborative and a teammate. So I, you know, I said that the dashboard will go live. By the time the web developer and we part ways and our contract is about to be done, the agreement is that they will give over the codes to Ramon's staff. And then by the time I, you know, get an analyst onboard, they would already have the keys to do everything behind the scenes and once, you know, I continue to get data and numbers, just feed it to the analyst and they can, you know, just keep an eye on it. And I will make a reference, for example, the city of Cambridge has a beautiful dynamic dashboard. However, it hasn't been updated in like two, two years. I think their last update is like from 2021. So that's something that I don't want to have happen, even though they've got a robust dashboard. It just, they apparently don't have anybody, you know, managing it. So that's something that I also, you know, wanted to avoid with this project.
That's awesome. And another thing, congratulations, Dr. Perez.
Thank you.
That is a huge, huge honor for us to have you onboard with us.
It's my honor to serve the city of Chelsea and thank you all for including me. And, you know, I'm all about the, I'm all about us, but I believe it's, it's good for us as, as women. So thank you so much for encouraging me.
Yes, I just want to again say, being, you know, I'll just be very quickly, being a one-woman operation, I know it's been a little tedious at times, but I want to thank you for all the questionnaires you send out and I know the time.
I know, I'm always sending out emails.
Repetitive questionnaires to fill it out if you've already done it, how to get, make sure it gets to you. But I just want to also thank you, as my colleagues have said, that your work that you've done, not only with us, but all the city departments, to have that ratio of ninety-plus percent of, they want to listen to you and hear what you're saying. And that's what we actually brought you in for, that in this office and it seems though that you're really running and you're, you're doing a remarkable job.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
You all will be proud. The directors here want DEI and they want to know what they don't know.
Right.
And they want to be innovative and robust with the innovation. So literally, I mean, they are all in and it's really helpful for individuals like myself. So you guys should be very proud of them.
Yeah, and your work under, with the library and just the, just going in there suggesting and bringing it to her, it, it's just remarkable.
Thank you.
And it's for the whole community. So I just really want to say thank you for being creative, inclusive, and your diversity style.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a quick question. What is your role when it comes to hiring people here within City Hall?
You know, I oftentimes sit with, you know, Cheryl and the HR director. I haven't really been in discussions as far as when job descriptions are being put together. But typically, when there's like a first round hiring process, I am looped in and I think more of a consultative role when they bring me in to sit in on the first round because ultimately it is at the discretion of the hiring manager. But I do provide my input as far as, you know, going beyond the court, the qualifications that the candidate brings and really taking a holistic approach. So while it is, for example, preferable to, you know, have a hire that is, you know, native to Chelsea, we're taking in all the elements of, you know, what does it really mean to be, you know, an inclusive hire and also inclusive meaning someone who is in the city, who has that opportunity to, you know, come in and, you know, work their way up if, if it's possible. But I think part of the consultative element that I bring when it comes to the first rounds of interviews is really being able to speak on, okay, well, if we're, we're not going to consider the Chelsea resident, what is, what is a truly provocative argument to bring in someone from the outside and what does that person have to offer to the city of Chelsea that will then, you know, improve not just the quality of life, but also, you know, this is a culture here and really being considered of that culture. So I think, you know, the consultative aspect of that and, you know, if I am asked to sit in on anything beyond a first round, you know, I pretty much will take, you know, a supportive, a supportive role in that because I don't want to supersede, you know, the hiring manager's voice, but I also think that it's important to really take a holistic view on, on hiring. What were you thinking as far as like?
Well, I think you should be involved in all, all aspects of people being hired.
Yeah. Beyond the first round, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was my question. Counselor Taylor.
I just have one quick question. Welcome. The hundred percent increase in contract services for this year, just correct me if I'm wrong, that, that's because you have no staff, right? Is it you're, you're contracting out for the people that you need to actually break down numbers?
Part of that is, part of it is because I don't have staff, but also because I've had to be creative in how to get projects done with a very limited budget. So, you know, being, it has, so needing the staff, but understanding that my first need full-time staff would be, you know, you know, an analyst, you know, probably could be someone who could do this for fifty thousand dollars. However, ideally, you know, I would have, you know, someone who can, you know, monitor, you know, the dashboard, the website and also be able to take all these things into consideration. But it really did help to get that state grant. So, you know, I haven't had to really dip too far into the funds for that for this past year. I'll get another grant for the, for the upcoming fiscal year, but it has been largely due to not having staff and really having to think innovatively how to get things done. My main concern was being able to provide a deliverable to all of you today within the twelve months since the last time that we saw each other. So right now, and Cheryl's seen the dashboard behind the scenes, part of why I've been sending those emails, hey, fill this out, fill this out, is because every time someone submits those surveys, it goes back into our aggregate on the backend. So, you know, our developer is seeing, okay, now we have this amount of people who are filling it out. Now we have, you know, oh, someone, you know, identified themselves as trans male. Like, I didn't know we had a trans male on staff. You know, like, these are things that we can then feed back and then I can talk to, you know, Ed and HR and say, okay, well, you know, what are these benefits offerings looking like? Are they, you know, indicative of what our staff needs? You know, and going back to, you know, Mr. Robbins's point of me being included on, you know, all the rounds of the hiring process, that is also something that we can speak towards as far as the needs of our staff in-house and the, the applications that are coming in. So I hope to have that FTE with, within the next fiscal year. So by the time I see you guys next year, it'll say, you know, I've got this staff coming on and this is what we've got going on and getting a handle on the budget with respect to what is available to me and, you know, how I can maneuver that. I'm being really creative with the money.
Then, so just my question.
Yeah.
I just, I was pretty sure that that was generally it.
Yeah, you're correct. You're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
July Recupero.
Employees training, twenty-five thousand, what's that for the managers of the city?
Not just managers, you know, it's been inclusive, for example, of the staff in DPW on the yard.
I'm sorry, you said staff?
Mm-hmm, staff members within.
Your staff members, you got someone that worked with you now?
City Hall staff.
All of them?
Hmm, well, majority of them, yeah. I mean, I can't say for sure that it's been a hundred percent of them, but the great bulk of them. And, you know, staff that are on sites, staff that are off-site. And I, again, I am a big proponent of, you know, if I'm asking someone to sit down for an hour, an hour and a half for training, I'd like to feed them. So I like to order nutritious food for them and to give you feedback from some of the skilled workers at the yard, they were like, can we do this more often? And, you know, they felt like they were part of the team and they were so excited for their little breakfast and, you know, I just, they just were energized, you know. So it made me more enthusiastic to, to coach them, you know, seeing as how they, they felt included in the events. So that's part of what that goes to.
How many employees have come to you from this city directly to you and to say, for you to help them and they have, you have resolved some of the issues that they had? What is the total amount that have, from this, the employees of the city that come to you?
There have been, I would say perhaps two to three employees who have come to me.
Two or three?
Two to three so far in this year who've come to me. To differing degrees of need. And I take a general policy of providing advice on best methods on how to move forward as well as, for example, if, you know, if it's, so one example would be if a staff member is complaining about, you know, a hostile work environment and feeling harassed at work, which, you know, has been the case, well, then that would be something where I would say, well, you know, have you already spoken to HR? And if it's something that becomes escalated, then I would loop in my colleagues in the law department to provide that consultative input on best methods to move forward. And by that point, it generally, you know, flows to law or, you know, if a complaint is made, then it becomes a legal matter. Another example would be if an employee feels like they're not advancing or they're not moving within City Hall. And I have actively provided my, because again, as we had this conversation last year, my office doesn't hold powers. So I can't, and I don't think I was brought here to subvert my colleagues' decisions on when they hire a staff member and to say, well, you should just hire this person because they, you know, this, that, and the third. I then would provide the individual who has a grievance with opportunities, whether it's development professionally. I extend myself and say, hey, if you want to come in my office and we can put together a plan, whether it's a one to two-year plan, let's start with a six-month plan. What does that look like as far as your career goals? And I, I offer to tailor it to them. And then I would say, well, does this make any sense? Don't throw everything on the wall and see what sticks. Be intentional with your trajectory. And when it comes to situations like that, that may have a dotted line to complaints of inequity from another department, I generally would take the stance of communicating with the director, in which case HR, and say, hey, what's going on? Or, you know, then it usually goes back to the hiring manager. But I don't believe I was brought here to, you know, subvert certain policies that have already been placed, you know what I mean? Like, so I, if you, if your question is asking whether or not I've been able to successfully subvert any processes, I haven't been able to do that.
But you answered your own question because you said you have no power. You just negotiate. Maybe your department should change where they should give you power, where you could make an effect. Because the way you just answered the question, you really can't do nothing but just advise and talk to them. But to be all fairness, your department should have more power. When an employee comes to you, you should have a say exactly to somebody else. This is, I can help you. If they only come to you and you really can't do nothing, like you said, you the one, you said it, that what is the point? Your department, we should maybe change a policy where you have a little more power than just, here, I'm gonna do this, but I can't do nothing. You know, that would be, in all fairness, a better way to do something, where you can actually have some type of power towards the people that committing something that employees don't agree with or whatever, that if, the way you said it, really you have no power. You can't do anything. You said it yourself. You know, so if it was up to me, I would give you more power. I would give you, at least you could be equal. You could play on a level field. What good is having you when you can't have no power? It's useless to have someone that can't change anything, in my opinion. That's just your own words. You, you can only negotiate. I would like to see your office have more power, not just negotiation, the ability to put someone and say, hey, you're doing something wrong in this. But I don't know how, how you would get that type of stuff, but if it was up to me, I would give it to you. Because the way you just explained it to me, you can't do nothing but advise.
Well, I defer to you and your illustrious colleagues on how to implement that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Demoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hear you talking about the data that you're aggregating and this like beautiful dream of passing it on to the analysts. It sounds great, but that's all very theoretical. And last year, we sat here and we all talked about how, it was beautiful during the height of the pandemic when the George Floyd stuff came up and everybody wanted to get on board with the DEI, but it just seemed like it lost gas and a lot of, and I'm seeing it in other places outside of, in schools or everyone, it kind of has fizzled out. And I hate that we would have invested so much money for the kids to have organized that beautiful protest that day and the community came together to invest in this department for us to not properly, properly invest in it so we can actually see what we're capable of accomplishing. And so I don't know why we're here again another year and like I heard when Dr. Perez said, I am relying heavily on external grants to fulfill the program's goals. Why are we not funding this at what it should be in order to actually get to the bottom of it? It, it doesn't feel good to create a department and put one person in there and just say, oh, we've done our due diligence. I think that if this is telling of what our values are, that we should be investing and giving the resources that we need to make sure that, that the program is moving in a direction that we want it to. And I understand that you're interim city manager and you're probably like, let's just keep it really simple. I don't know. But I just, I just really wish that after the conversation we had last year, that we would be discussing today how to adequately fund this department. It's a department that, that people were very confused about and people think it's just about race. It's not. It's about gender. It's about religion. It's about accessibility. And we here in this city, in City Hall and in all our departments, we do horribly when it comes to accessibility, particularly with our disability community. And even for me, I have had to reach out to Candace when I wasn't allowed to participate in virtual meetings, given the fact that I had a disability and the state allowed for these, a lot of these meetings to be virtual. So, I mean, I think that it sucks for me to sit here and see that, oh, we're not funding this department again. And I'm not going to be here next year to question it again. And, and I don't know that anybody's gonna keep pushing it and it can't just be a feel-good moment. It has to be something that we're following through on our values. And so that's all I just wanted to say. It's really, it's frustrating for me, but I commend you in everything that you've done. I'm really excited to see this, this data thing that's coming out.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. I really appreciate that. And with the volume of emails that you all receive from me on a biweekly basis, I definitely will send an update as soon as it's available, the dashboard. And it will be available internally as far as our internal portal until we figure out with, between, you know, Ramon and Cheryl, what's appropriate to have accessible to the public. But I appreciate you, Councilman Recupero. I also appreciate. But I appreciate you, Councilman Recupero. I also appreciate you. I appreciate all of you. Um, it, DEI across not just the Commonwealth, but across the country, um, is still viewed with a lot of cynicism and suspicion. I'm fortunate. I and colleagues up here in the Northeast are fortunate where, you know, we, you know, aren't operating with like, you know, evil governors who are literally cutting us out of existence. Um, and as we see, you know, the increase of traffic with, you know, plates from South Carolina and Florida and Georgia that we see more and more on the roads with people moving up here who, you know, want their kids to have a better quality of life, who want their daughters to have, you know, a fighting shot of having autonomy over their uteruses and, you know, who want their children to be able to be free without fear of persecution or death. Um, I think, yes, there is an element where we do need the capital. And I do understand that the city of Chelsea may not necessarily have the same accessibility of the funds. And that's why I am trying my best to make it happen with the, the state grants as best as I can. Because I know that the availability is not what it is in Boston or Cambridge or Lexington or Beverly. I, I understand that. But yes, over the long term, we, I would like to work with each of you on how to continue to open up that avenue of being able to allocate more funds to this department, even if it's just me and an analyst, um, you know, for the next year, year and a half, two years. Um, and, you know, I'm young and strong. I can continue, you know, ripping and running. But, you know, there's going to be an increased financial element eventually.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you all. Have a good night. Thank you.
Next, yeah. Council, we're gonna take a one-minute break, Council. So we can get adjusted, all right?
Uh, good evening. Uh, we'll reconvene with the police department, uh, budget. Um, uh, as I, uh, we have, uh, we have the chief by, uh, screen here on, on my left.
He doesn't see us. We're waiting.
And, uh, in the room is, uh, Captain McLean. Uh, so, uh, uh, if you're to turn to your, uh, budget book, uh, you'll find on page 118 that there's, uh, uh, the police department has introduced a budget for, of thirteen point four million dollars this year. Um, and, uh, uniformed officers making up a hundred and fourteen, uniformed officers. So, um, I'll give Ed a moment to walk through the, uh, budget briefly and then, uh, you'll be able to ask questions, uh, both in the room and, uh, by, uh, by screen here.
Thank you, Ned. So if you'll turn a few pages beyond page 123, you'll see the summary of the department budget, page one-
Yes.
I just need to recuse myself. Um, my brother is a police officer and so is my ex-husband, so I will be recused. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay, so on page 123, there's the summary of the budget. Ned mentioned the, early on in his comments at the beginning of the night that the police and fire departments represented about twenty-five percent of the city budget. The police department is actually fourteen percent. And there are a hundred and twenty positions, one hundred and fourteen. Ned mentioned on sworn officers. There are nine other civilian positions that are funded by this budget. There, within the one hundred and fourteen sworn officers are three new patrol positions. So Ned also mentioned at the beginning of the night, there were some departments that we were asking for new hires in. And in the police department, we're looking for three patrol officers. These would be funded at seventy-five percent grant. So that's a great thing for us. It's a JAG grant, I believe, and Lydia, a COPS grant. Lydia can comment further on that. Um, seventy-five percent is funded by the grant, twenty-five percent by general fund. There are two school resource officers in this budget as well, and they are funded at a hundred percent on the school side. So this is one more thing where the school, a few weeks ago, had their budget and this was included in theirs. When you look at the other salary items on page 123, there's some reallocation between the longevity and the uniform allowance lines, almost dollar for dollar, just a couple thousand dollars variance. Further down on the page, the operations lines, what, what stands out there is the contract services increase. And that has to do with an agreement that the city has, the police department has, with Suffolk County Sheriff's Department for holding prisoners prior to arraignment. So the captain or the chief can elaborate on that further, um, when I finish. The next page, page 124, you'll see an increase in gasoline and that's nine, nine percent increase due to rising costs. You're gonna see that in a couple of other departments as we go through the next couple of nights, that there are increases in some and not others, because some are sufficiently funded and others need additional due to the increases of that utility. So with that, I'll turn this over to the captain, Captain McLean, and the chief.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Captain McThomas McLean with the Chelsea Police Department. I'm here on behalf of the department. Chief Fulton-
Good evening, I'm sure you can-
Hold on.
I just wanted to make a first statement on the budget and, uh, and to thank the, uh, captain city manager, Mr. Dunn, which I was there, especially for my first, uh, proceeding of this as my tenure as chief. The police department uses the funds that you're appropriating, hopefully, that we are committed to, taking pride and dedicated to the needs of our community. Uh, we always continue to strive to build a quality police service in an effective, responsive, professional manner. Uh, the offices recognize and accept our responsibility to maintain oil, affording dignity, respecting individually accountable. Our objective is to improve the quality of life in community and interagency partnerships and to promote safe and secure, secure community. We try to balance, uh, that responding to quick, quickly and professionally to all forms of crime and emergencies while actively engaging the community we serve in collaboration, problem-solving, and crime prevention efforts. We recognize that quality of life begins with public safety. And, uh, as the chief and the police department will continue, uh, to build on our partnerships with other law enforcement agencies, city government, civic agencies to address crime and disorder issues. In doing so, we will continue to be guided by, uh, the department's core values of treating everybody with respect, dignity, having integrity, and treating people with fairness in all our future encounters and endeavors. Um, as Mr. Dunn spoke on the budget, uh, the increases are based on contractual increases. We have a salary, uh, increase to, uh, union contracts in both the patrol and superior officers' union. Um, he also mentioned we are, uh, hiring three additional officers. Uh, that seventy-five percent is paid in that area by the COPS, federal COPS grant. Two of those officers will be school resource officers and one will be transferred to the community service division, uh, to help replace with the three, uh, replenish the three recent retirees from, retirees from that unit. They also mentioned the gas, uh, increase. That was the nine point five percent increase in the fuel cost. Uh, the main, uh, item that you will see is the, uh, light item for the Suffolk County Sheriff's Office. Uh, this is very dear to me. Um, if anybody is ever set a night in our police department cell block, uh, I believe, uh, it's, we don't, we are not going by my philosophy of treating people with dignity, dignity and respect. Uh, we are not prepared to house them. We are not trained really properly to house people, especially with, uh, evolving mental health issues, uh, persons with substance abuse issues. Uh, just recently, in the last six months, there have been two in custody deaths. Uh, one at a state police barracks in the North Shore and one in, one in a community north of us as well. Um, so I believe it's the humane thing to do and it also, uh, limits our liability uh, from exposing, uh, ourselves to this potential, uh, liability. So that's a very important thing to me that, uh, that I spoke with, uh, former city manager, Tom Ambrosino, and he was, uh, actually, he was surprised that we actually housed prisoners. Uh, but we do. And sometimes if you're there for three nights on a Friday to a holiday weekend, it's, uh, it's, it's very difficult for even our officers, um, to deal with these people who are, like I said, sitting on a steel bed with a, basically, a small pillow and a blanket. In fact, they don't get a pillow. They just get a blanket. So we're gonna try to move away from that, hopefully. Uh, just to go over one key accomplishment from last year, uh, again, the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission voted to award, award us an additional three-year period through 2025. Uh, what accreditation is, it demonstrates the Chelsea Police Department's ongoing commitment to delivering exemplary level of police service to our community. We are the only accredited police department, uh, on the bordering cities that touch us. Uh, so the cities that touch us, uh, on our borders are not accredited and we are on a ninth year of accreditation. And I believe it shows in, uh, the way our offices and internally how we, uh, handle our in-house issues and handling, uh, dealing with the public. Uh, the main goal in fiscal '24 is, which was mentioned, is hiring these traditional officers, uh, to, to, uh, add to school resource officers. Uh, these positions will play a pivotal measure to reengage our offices with the entire school community. Um, as we know, and I know from my history, uh, there's been a gap in that and, uh, we're hoping these two new school officers will, uh, bring our level to four. Uh, that will greatly increase, uh, positive engagement with youth throughout the community. And the third officer was designated to work as a, uh, downtown task force officer and will enhance the outreach of our community service division to address neighborhood needs, not just in the downtown area, uh, but as I talk to city, uh, uh, councilors, it's, uh, in every one of their districts. And, um, right now, we're very short in, uh, to me, community service and, uh, those neighborhood issues are the main, uh, concern of mine moving forward. Uh, so that's all I, my opening statement and I'll answer any questions. Um, if I cannot hear them, they're gonna text me. I can hear some of you real clearly sometimes, uh, some of the ones further out on the edge, uh, near the door is tough. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Chief had hit on everything.
Okay. On the left, any questions? Council.
Thank you so much. Thank you, um, chief, for making that effort to be in here virtually and for the entire staff who's here. I want to recognize the other, um, police officers that are here as well, sergeants, captains. I see an increase on your contract services. Can you walk us through, uh, the, the, the subject matter of these services? And what are some areas that are of main focus for the increase in ninety-nine thousand?
Yes, the, uh, the increase of ninety-nine thousand is based on, uh, we did a, an assessment of the average number of, uh, persons we take into custody. Uh, when we take that, uh, number, it's obviously not juveniles. Juveniles are never held for more than a short period. Uh, it's not protective custodies. It was those who were arrested, possibly do not have money, are unable to be bailed. Uh, I believe that if Lydia was there, we thought that was about three, just around three hundred, uh, persons we take into custody, uh, that who would have to spend the long weekends in our cell block. Um, which is, again, it's, uh, it's, it's not fair to some people who are arrested on a minor charge to spend a whole weekend at our facility due to not having a forty-dollar bail, uh, fee to pay. Others are, have issues. We have no, like, the Suffolk County Sheriff's have a nurse on standby there twenty-four seven. They have multiple deputies, uh, in the area. They're able to shower. They're able, they're fed better. It's just a place better fit, uh, for their comfort. Uh, we are going back to the eighteen hundreds here, where we're one of the last areas of the country that local police departments, um, house people who, uh, are arrested. And we're one of the last counties, I think we may be one of the last counties in Massachusetts to do this. The town of Winthrop was ahead of us. Uh, we're second. The city of Rivera is, uh, shortly coming online after us. And, uh, the city of Boston is proceeding with the same, uh, uh, philosophy as us. So that ninety-nine thousand was a factored number based on, uh, not counting the COVID years, kind of a four-year overview of how many people that we keep overnight or multiple days.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you so much for everything that you guys do in our community. My question is regarding, um, grants. Are there any grants? I know last year, there were some grants that covered some of the, um, materials that the officers use, sort of like the Narcan, um, right? Um, but in general, are there any grants that are going to be expiring and that you guys are seeking funding from the city to cover?
Lydia, if you, uh, can answer that, uh, Captain, you got this?
According to what we have here on the grant list, uh, there's nothing that's gonna be expiring that we're looking to ask the council for money on.
They roll over, so we apply on the early basis and we've always been given funding. The only one was Narcan, actually. Uh, they didn't provide us funding in FY twenty-three.
Can I ask you to use the mic, please?
Uh, the only grant is Narcan, the Narcan grant. They didn't provide any funding for FY twenty-three to any cities or towns. So, um, in that respect, we'd have to use general funds for, for, well, actually, not even, because Narcan now is free for everyone. So we have a license and then we just order directly from the state.
Um, thank you. And my other question is, last year, I know we spoke a lot about, um, stipends. Um, there was, um, questions regarding, um, translation or the ability to have translation when officers are arriving to the scene and folks don't speak English. Um, uh, are we increasing, are we providing a stipend for officers who are bilinguals, similar to how other departments do?
Currently, we are not.
Okay. Is that something that we are thinking of doing in the long run?
That would have to be negotiated with the city, I believe, when the next contract comes up.
The contract.
The contract issue.
Yeah, contractual issue with, uh, both unions, the superiors and the patrol.
Okay, okay. Um, I also have a question regarding, um, retention. For the police officers that are, um, Chelsea officers, um, the cost of living, obviously, rents are going up and all of that. Um, how are we, um, supporting our officers from moving on to another higher-paying city?
Um, this is a, uh, issue with every police department. I'm actually at a conference now where, uh, it seems that officers are jumping from department to department. Um, we have lost some good officers. Um, we've also gained, uh, officers to fill the role, uh, to fill the void. That's, um, my responsibility. Um, we currently, uh, recently, we had two to- We currently, recently, we had two to three contemplating leaving, and they all thankfully decided to stay. I always encourage officers, if they look to go on to a different avenue of their careers, that I am not to hold them back, but my responsibility is to the city is to quickly fill that officer's spot. We currently, luckily, to have, out of the, plus the three officers that we spoke about in the budget, we are filling four more recent retirees. So that, we have a July academy where we're gonna have seven new officers. That should be out to serve the community sometime early next year. I can say that one of the questions that always come up too is the reflection of the community. We are gonna be well beyond fifty percent of officers who are officers of color. In fact, the next seven, six officers, I believe, Latino. And the last four we had were all Latino. So the department is getting younger. It's, obviously, you have to live in a community for five years, and I think that's a good thing. I think it's helping keeping officers that wanna stay in the city, because officers at the beginning of their careers could go to other places. Other area agencies do not have any window of you have to live in a community for any amount of time. We do, it's five years, and we've been able to put on four, four, and it'll be fifteen offices in less than fifteen months. And I think that sets the message that officers do wanna stay here, work here, and are happy to provide service to, to our residents.
Thank you, Chief. And lastly, again, thank you, thank you for the entire department, for everything that you guys do in the community. I witnessed it firsthand, so just very grateful for your work. Thank you.
Counselor, go ahead.
I just have one quick last question that came from Councilor DeJesus, just came to my mind now that you asked all these questions. I, I will make this a budget question, so let me see how I can frame this. I, I've, I am aware that some police officers are incentivized by the four-on-three off-shift duty, the job. Does that make sense to you? Does that ring a bell, the four-three-day schedule, similar to the one in Everett, that the Everett Police Department has? Does that ring a bell to you?
It's the four and four. They have four days on, four days off. That's what they have in Everett. That's what.
Wonderful. So I know this might go into more of a collective bargaining conversation, but is that something that this department has considered adopting in terms of incentivizing to keep the retention of our police officers?
Captain, is this the four-on-four?
Yes, Chief.
Four-on-four, yes.
Yes, it would be, again, it would be contractual. I am open to it. It is the most common police schedule in the country. A lot of the complaints of officers, and everybody in the room knows one, is, family members of one, you spend a lot of time away from your family with the current shift schedule. The four-on-four, basically, you work longer hours, four days a week, but you have four days away from the department that you can spend quality time with your family. Before these new officers that are gonna be going to the academy, we have to have a set number, Captain McLean is probably an expert at this, that if, contractually, they became to an agreement, and we have enough officers to fill the different aspects of how to make this work, I've told both unions that I am all for listening and working with the city, with the city manager, and contractually making it happen if it's the majority of the unions or their, their union vote. It's, again, the city, Everett does it. They had little growing pains with it, but we can learn from them. I believe New York City just, in certain boroughs, just started to do it because it was one of the biggest officer complaints. So the long answer, should have been short, is that I am definitely open to it as the chief, but again, contractual, it would have to be worked out with both unions and city government.
So the, I guess the, my, my follow-up to that is, can we afford it? Is the budget there for us to afford a four-on-four?
Sorry, Captain, you can answer that, because I didn't hear it that well.
Budget, do we have the money for it?
The way it seems to work with the four-on-four, it actually probably benefit the city in the end, because you'd have less overtime, there would, because you'd have more guys on the street overlapping each other. And I, I think it ultimately would have to do a complete review of it, but I believe that we, it would save the city money in the long run. And we could look at other cities that have done it, and compare the money they've saved. I believe Everett has had a cost savings to their overtime budget because of the amount of guys that'll come on, and they'll have available for calls for service, and also gives the ability to, with the overlap of shifts, maybe look into getting more officers in the neighborhoods for a few hours during that overlap, when we have the extra officers. And that's, that's an expense worth having.
Okay. Is there appetite in the department for that?
Yes. I've seen, talking with the officers, I would say majority of them want the four-on-four. You're not gonna get a hundred percent, but a good majority want it.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
I have a follow-up now.
Go, Rob.
Thank you. Chief, Captain, I know the Mass, state police have water vehicles between the shores, we serve here at Boston, Charlestown area, and Chelsea. I'm wondering, I've been asked to ask a question here. Does the city of Chelsea have a water boat for coastal emergencies, like a water boat? Do we have our own water boat for coastal emergencies that we get around, and has it been in use?
Yes, it was provided by U.A.C., it was under the grant money. We do have one. It's currently, Module Street is where it's stationed. It is able to be deployed if there is an emergency. We have, I believe, four offices that are certified on it, and we have used it in the past for incidents. And I, I don't know what they are off the top of my head, but I know they have deployed, but we could find that out if you really wanted to know. But it has been used.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, that was funded a hundred percent by, by the grant that the captain mentioned. It's part of our inventory.
So it was a hundred percent funded by a grant?
U.A.C. grant.
It was actually just deployed today. I was informed, looking for that child over in Castle Island that was missing. So we have used it as recently as today.
Yeah. I'm glad we could have been assistants. Hope we was in good chandling with it. Thank you, thank you. That's all I have.
Questions on the side?
So first of all, welcome, and thank you for everything that you do. I'm, I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions. I'm generally a big fan of, of what you guys have put together, and, and it's obvious that police departments around the country are looking to Chelsea to provide better policing to their own communities, so I applaud you for that. The first thing is, I think that there's been kind of a community, you know, the zeitgeist today is about mental health, and, and people are starting to recognize that this is pretty important, and, and it causes a lot of the problems that we experience, and, and, and so the, my question is, I know that you have somebody that goes on ride-alongs from Suffolk Mental Health, and I saw that on your goals, that you were going to step up the training, the ROKA training for the Rewire Four Law Enforcement Training Model. Can, can you, can you guys just, just talk for just a bit about how we're gonna address, and I, and I think it's only gonna get worse. You know, we, we have, we, we're gonna have a lot of new people coming into the city who have experienced a lot of trauma along the way, and it just, it, it just compounds the problems that we see. So can we, can we get a little something about, you know, what, what you're doing to address these problems?
I can, thank you, Counselor. I can say one thing, we are light years ahead of other agencies, and I'm with a lot of chiefs from bigger, smaller communities over the last couple of days. The mental health issues and the issues of trauma that affect everybody, newly arrived residents, we do have mechanisms in place. We have a great relationship, not just with ROKA, we have an embedded clinician that responds to calls with us. She was actually at the tragedy of the, the recent incident on Lafayette Ave, because we felt that unknowing what happened, but a clinician would be great to have there. We have a great relationship and working relationship with our new HART program, with the Collaborative, and a multitude of domestic violence victims groups. We use the Hub frequently. I attend the meetings every Tuesday. A lot of the problems are just, they are mental health-based, they are trauma-based, and they are a group of practitioners. The police department, we just host the meeting, and collectively, we try to find the right group or organization to start that process. As the chief, I've been out on calls of people hoarding, people just as going door-to-door with outreach workers, social worker that's embedded with us. Again, the HART program from the Collaborative, which is just kicking off, newly arrived immigrants, one ended up at Salem Hospital, not knowing where to go, we don't know how they ended up there, just picture the traumatic experience of their travels to get, you know, how they ended up in Boston and at Salem Hospital. Our officers are twenty-four-seven, responded there, and had wraparound services within probably twelve hours after getting them hotels. This is the new way of policing. It has to be holistic. It's, in the old days, we would just let that family sit in the hospital. We would not have a clinician responding to calls with us. We would not have groups like the Hub or HART. This is very big, especially for me. This is my way of being more like, I believe holistic policing and the wraparound services is the way we are heading. It's, it's that positive interaction, and hopefully, that time and distance that you get to know somebody instead of making an arrest when you don't, you don't understand the underlying conditions. Are there gonna be issues? Absolutely. But we're best to address them, and we will continue to try to better ourselves in all these calls that we respond to.
So, one other thing. I always get asked, I always get asked, if, if, if you, if you see the chief, ask him about the patrols in Prattville. So, you know, there's, there's.
I'd have to ask myself that question.
I, I, I know, and I, I keep telling people, well, he knows better, so hopefully, hopefully we'll see a few more cruisers. But that was, that was it. And thank you for, thank you for, for that explanation about the, the, the mental health issue. I think it's really, I think it's, anytime we can, in government, take proactive policies, government needs to be a lot more proactive instead of reactive. And, and I think that that goes not just for policing, but for everything else. And if we can head off problems before they come, this is what good government is. So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Go, Counselor.
If I just kind of roll back to the top level, still trying to reorient myself a little bit, you and I have talked, the numbers are just phenomenal for the, the sort of direction things have gone crime-wise in the community over the past decade or so. If I were to look at the results, which I would call very positive for the past ten years, and try to figure out what did we spend money on that made a real strong positive impact there, and then just ask the question, is that the same place that we should be trying to spend money for the next, you know, foreseeable future, two years, three years, five years, whatever? Are the levers the same is, you know, did we pick low-hanging fruit, and now we're looking for new areas? Are we trying to do more of the same? I have a suspicion that if I look at, you know, we've added bodies, we, I've heard incredibly positive things about the Hub, HART, some of the housing actions. I, I suspect that the answer is all of these, not one specific thing. But can you just help me organize my own framework in terms of what was leading to action, and, and what is the next direction? Just help me find the big picture.
Well, I can answer, in the past, since I've been here for thirty-seven years, we never had any connected services. It was, we were your twenty-four-hour agency that wasn't trained very well at handling anything except making an arrest. We changed that model. Sometimes it starts off in like little silos in the police department, special groups and special units, and in just my seven months here, it's grown to try to, my, my job is to make it a department-wide model. I think the short answer is, like the downtown task force, which the city manager, Mr. Ambrosino, the former city manager, was very big on, set the model. We have resources, the downtown has, still does, has issues sometimes with people who suffer from either substance abuse or alcohol abuse, but we're able to put resources there. There were specialized teams. My goal is that every officer should have that knowledge. We have a young department that is gonna be, to me, moldable, and they're, they're trained already in the academy for these things. If there was money to, to be, if I ever could request, I would request for money like the HART program, that the whole department would know what to do on a twenty-four-hour basis when they have a family in crisis, a family that's left out by a fire. We had a homeless family that was found by the state police out of Chelsea, out of, I'm not sure if it was near the Fells in Medford. That is my goal, and that is, like I said, I don't know how the funding is. Our officers are trained. Any extra money we obviously take, we're always looking for grants, because I think some of our programming is unique, and that's my goal and my role, to try to promote it and get federal money to enhance it. But my goal is that every officer has to have the basic model of understanding the mental health issues, understanding the substance abuse issues. Mostly, my next phase is understanding the neighborhoods they're assigned. My counselor, where I live, like the Seymour Police, I would like to see more police in the Prophyl area too, and I'm sure they're there, but we need to know that they're out there, they know the neighborhood concerns, because each concern does ultimately come down to a neighborhood, and the neighborhood officer has to be the lead voice in public safety for that neighborhood.
So if I can sort of try to articulate what you said, I think what you're saying is, the next place to look to spend money is on connections, on multi-services, on maybe not so much additional officers, or maybe more soft, softer side elements of, of spending money. Is that correct?
I, I believe I heard, yes. I think what I was trying to say is, our direction is move, moving toward that approach, and looking for funding sources that is like that holistic policing. I, I have trouble, I'm, I'm thinking I'm answering you correctly.
Nope, that's good enough, I don't need to.
But I'm hoping I'm answering.
I'll figure it out, yeah. Just a little detail question. I'd noticed when the law department was talking, they had talked about a decent amount of their cost and their work was related to license-to-carry actions? And it kind of caught my ear, because I wasn't aware. Is there something new that I've missed? Is there something I should be hearing in that, or was that a kind of side comment? Are we seeing anything different in license-to-carry actions, or is that just an ongoing thing?
Can you react?
She had, she had described that some of the law department's work, she had sort of noted that there were a decent number of license-to-carry challenges, where people would come to the police department, apply for a license-to-carry, be denied, and then she would be in some version of an action with them. Is that a new thing, or did it just happen to pop up and happen to catch my ear today? Or is there something new there that I should be aware of in the community?
Okay, I'm, I'm, I think I'm getting the question about license-to-carry firearms you're talking about, and I, I can tell you that there was, in general, we do, the Supreme Judicial, Supreme Court changed the case law, but we, in the past, we would have to, you would have to give a reason that the chief would, a legitimate reason why you wanted a full license-to-carry. That question's been taken off the table due to a Supreme Court case. So we've definitely had an increase in license-to-carry applications, probably tenfold. Ninety-five percent of them probably go through properly. Others have statutory restrictions based on their criminal record that automatically makes them, the state will stop it at the next level. There is, there is an appeals process, and is also, the appeals from my end would be suitability, something that is short of the statutory requirement, but based on an incident or a series of incidents, I could request, I could state a denial, and the process would be they'd go before the judge and the city attorney. they'd go before the judge and the city attorney would basically take on the case on behalf of me. So that's how the process goes. We do have denials. And they can actually appeal it. Most of the time, we've, some appeals have gone against us. That persons weren't able to get their license-to-carry. And sometimes the judge sides with the city in denying the license.
Thank you.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes, thank you guys for being here. My question is regarding the cameras. We had a pilot program for the cameras for officers. I think there was eight or six somewhere on there. My question is, that program still going on? Are we thinking about extending to all the police officers?
That actually is...
Is this a question, are you going to answer, Captain? Is this the body one cameras?
Yeah, yes, Chief.
Is this a question of the implementation?
Yeah. Good, Chief, sorry.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. The body one cameras, they're pretty much ready to go. There's obviously hiccups when you start a new technology. Our department was quick to jump on, but again, there's been court cases. Our policy was embedded in both union contracts. So every time there's a change in policy, we have to renegotiate with the, with both unions. Officer Hernandez, who's sitting before you today next to the screen holding me, has been working tirelessly on this. There's been some hiccups with the company, but our officers are trained. They're, we're still working out a few bugs on something that's more operational and behind the scenes. Not operational, more computerized with a glitch. It's basically every time these operational changes is renegotiating with the union because it is a violation of the contract because that policy, which was written, I believe, in 2021, a lot of things in the world have changed when it comes to technology with cameras, court cases with cameras, the district attorney's opinion on how we should wear cameras. So that's where we are. But I believe we're close, we're ready to go as soon as these few glitches. And I believe the unions have been given, and we've worked with them closely. Captain McLean's been excellent on this to finalize the final aspects of the policy. So hopefully, we'll be moving forward quickly.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, Officer Sammy Mohica's been out for a while. And I think he was a Latino liaison or a community mediator. Every time there was a confrontation about parking, about whatever reason it was, he was there and he was great at that job. Is anybody taking that step to cover up for him?
Captain, I had a tough time hearing that question if you can answer it.
Because he's out in, with his issues, his spot is being held. So it's his job when he comes back. We haven't had the manpower to pull anybody out of patrol to backfill him at this time. So once we, either he comes back or we get those three offices, we're able to expand. We will make sure someone's back there because he did provide a service and it seemed like he did very well with the community and the citizens. But right now, we just, this job is his. He's out on leave right now. And once he comes back, he will go back to that position. But at the time, we don't have manpower to backfill that spot and give it to someone else on a temporary basis based off of what we've got available for officers.
And I can, Counsel, I can also add on with the, we do have three plus the four seven. And community service, I know, I speak to you and you're very engaged in your neighborhood. And I want to get back officers back in the neighborhoods. We, that officer has been out long-term. We need to fill, obviously, the void to make sure that your constituents feel, you know, that our community service efforts are good in your district. So we're doing our best. The problem is the captain can explain, when you hire an officer, it takes a year before they get out on the street. So even these seven, who are going to go to an academy in July, we won't even see them out in the street until February. So we're hoping some of our officers who have been out with long-term illnesses come back, including that officer you mentioned, who was a, just such a loss when he went out with his illness. But I do hear you and understand you and believe me, I agree that we do need more efforts placed in the neighborhoods, especially with cameras and constituent complaints.
Thank you. We'll sit.
Counsel DeMoli.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. It's not even so much about the cameras and all. It's just the service that Officer Mohica provided in terms of like mediating a lot of situations that didn't even require people to actually go to the police station. And, you know, I send him my prayers on my own all the time. I send him his messages. I don't get in his business. I don't know if he's coming back. Honestly, it doesn't matter. But it would be nice if we had somebody temporarily at least trying to dip the toes in that water because it really is a really important thing that we lost with him. And again, I sent him all my best wishes on his health. I have a comment and then I have a question. I, in my life, as a resident here in Chelsea, I have had, I should say unfortunately, but I've had to interact with the police department, with some of the specialty departments that aren't always in the paper or these meetings. And I just have to highlight and give kudos to the professionalism of some of these men that are working behind the scenes and in the office. It is amazing, the work that is done there. I'm very critical of anyone, of any department, if I feel like there's something going on. But you have to give credit where credit is due with some of these men that are at the Chelsea Police Department. It really makes me proud to serve this community. So I just wanted to say that. The other thing I wanted to say is that Officer Tixira is an amazing person. He is the man. But there is no way that he can handle the need for the issues that we have with dogs in this community. And I bring it up every budget season. And then still I look and it's just still O'Gyall by himself in this department. And it really would be nice if we could kind of like, there's a lot more people living in this community. There are a lot more dog owners. There's a lot of poop in all of our parks. And dogs are fighting in the parks. It just doesn't, I just feel that whenever there's an issue, we call him and he shows up. But if he's not working, a regular officer has to come and take a lost dog or a wandering dog. And I just feel like we're just, we're missing an opportunity here to really invest in this department. It's really an issue across the entire city. And I would like to see more resources go there. But that's all I have.
I agree, Counsel. Thank you. And thank you for the message to the officers who do the stuff behind the scenes. There is, most of the community doesn't know what some of our detectives and other units that do that day-to-day, you're exposed to a uniformed officer. But being in investigations and in community service where a lot of things is behind the scenes, that makes me the most proud, especially here, a comment from you. So thank you.
I have a two-part question. One, how many bilingual police officers? And two, how many police officers are actually women in Chelsea now? Last time I counted, it was 20. I don't know if that has increased or decreased.
I don't have those numbers exactly, but I, all the new hires live in the city. The seven that we're hiring, they all live in the city. As for the amount of bilingual officers, I don't have an exact number on that.
It'd be close to 50%, I think, right?
I was going to say, because we've got, we've got...
Close to 50% will be well over 50% with this next group of seven. Captain McLean did, I have the sheet in front of me. Of course, it's not in front of you right now. But yeah, we're going to have approximately 60 out of the 114 if we go to full capacity of bilingual officers.
Well, thank you for that answer. Counsel Lopez, yep.
I heard before that under shift from 11 to 7, there's only three officers, four officers. Is it that true?
No, there's at least four sector cars, two officers assigned inside. Then you've got the impact officers when they're in as well. And that could range anywhere from two to three guys, depending on how many are working that night. The bare minimum that'd ever be on the street during a 11 to 7 shift would be four patrol officers and a street supervisor. And that's the minimum.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you all. I really appreciate it. Let me do this remotely. Have a great night. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lydia, thank you.
Who's next? I don't have my thing.
What are we taking over?
Are we in recess?
Yeah, so, everything will go.
No quarrel. There's no quarrel. Come back, Leo. You can take over. Finish it or go on. Keep going. You can make your presentation.
Thank you very much. City manager, if you'll, office, if you'll turn to page 49. There are, we're funding for three positions next year. The city manager, the deputy city manager, and the communications and outreach manager. There is one other position that was in prior years funded, but it's currently vacant. And that was the innovation and strategy advisor. Kate Fox Lent has moved as commissioner of DBW. So this position is not funded for next year. It might be something that a new city manager wants to talk with you about in the fall. So the budget is pretty much level-funded this coming year. You know, slight increases in salaries representing the salary increase representing a reclass for the community, communications and community outreach manager that occurred a year ago. But in general, this budget funds dues and subscriptions. And that's membership in several large regional organizations like the Mass Municipal Association and the Metro Mayor's Coalition, MAPC, Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and the National Civic League. We maintain a standard dollar amount for community events and subsidize on occasion events in the city. But other than that, it's pretty much standard operating activity in the department.
And anybody have any question? Do you have any question for Mr. King? Anybody listen?
So just a quick question about this budget in general. So as we, as we go through the different departments, right? How it's laid together, we have the actual spending for 22, the adopted spending for 23, and the proposed spending for 24. All throughout this book, except one place, and that is on page 6. So if you go to the page, back to page 6 where you started, the actual expenditures for 22 is conspicuously absent. So I know that we had, the state just came up, that we had $23 million of free cash certified, okay? Now, my point in bringing this all up is that we have a nine, in the city, we've got a $98 million budget and we've got $23 million in free cash. Now, I know that we just experienced a pandemic. We know that unforeseen circumstances. We've got serious infrastructure problems with our sewers, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of things that we need money for. But $23 million seems like an awful lot of money. That's about 25% of the budget. So I talked to the, to previous city manager about this, about, you know, a habit of kind of over-budgeting on the backs of the taxpayers in order to create the slush fund that we use for necessary unforeseen expenses. But I can't help, and I would be remiss in my duties as a city councillor if I did not bring this up during a budget hearing about maybe giving some of that money back to the taxpayers instead of, instead of having 25% of the budget in free cash.
Well, it was 17 million on the general fund side. The other monies were water and sewer.
I'm sorry, were what?
The other funds are, you're counting in water and sewer funds.
Okay. But, so, all right, I stand corrected on the water and sewer. But my point remains, I mean, this is a, this is a, you know, this is a thing. And I know you're not going to be, you know, the, so I don't mean to bust your chops here about, about this. I just, I think that it's important for, for the public to understand what's actually going on here with, with, with money. And I think that some of our revenues are starting to come back now, stronger than we thought. I mean, we get your emails about, about, about the revenue streams and things are looking pretty good. So I can't help but wonder if we can, if, you know, if we can try to have a little mercy on the, on the taxpayers.
Point taken. I think that another point to make on this is that when we're preparing the capital plan, you'll find that this year's capital plan had over $12 million in free cash programmed in it for next year. So what we're essentially saying to you is that by having free cash, we're, we're not creating long-term liabilities in our capital plan. So we are borrowing at very low levels to achieve capital projects and we're paying for those out of current operating funds. So right off the...
Sorry, go ahead. I, I get, I get your point. Although I think we have been pretty aggressive because we had those, those extra dollars to spend on making sure that, that we... So, so your point remains, I understand, about not creating long-term liabilities, which I think is important. I also think, you know, you know, the, the, the people that live in a generally poor community, especially, you know, and I know we have a, we have a robust exemption for residents, but things have gotten pretty tough economically. And I think, I just think that, you know, if we can, if we can try to give a little bit of money back to the taxpayers to make up for some of this other stuff that isn't caused by the city, you know? I mean, you go to Market Basket and instead of paying $100, you're now paying $150. It's just, it's, it's, you know, I, this is the only thing that I wanted to bring up to you as far as, as far as the budgeting and the... I'd like to actually see the actuals. Can go through this and add it all up.
We can provide those reports. I would argue that this, that the auditing department and the city is transparent. We do have our annual comprehensive financial report on the city website. We have our forecasts for multiple years on the city website. The fact that a column is not shown on this page doesn't mean that, that it's not...
No, I don't, I was, I was, I know. I was, I was just having a little fun with you. I wasn't being serious about you not trying to be transparent. I apologize if, I don't, I don't mean to say that.
Thank you.
I just mean that it, it seems, it's, it just seems like that's, it's an awful lot of money to have. And, and, you know, I, I understand, we, we wanna pay down stuff, we wanna have, we wanna be ready in case of an emergency. I just, I, I'm making a basic point about fairness to the people, that's all. And so I, I would, I would respectfully ask that that be taken into consideration because, you know, there's a lot of people out there that work pretty hard that, that are kind of, you know, struggling to get by now because things have gone, everything has gone up. The price of everything has gone up. And the more that we can do, instead of, you know, putting a little bit more money into, into, you know, the, the capital improvement plan, maybe we can give a little relief to the, to the taxpayers. That's my point.
Anybody else?
I'm so sorry. So the, the position that was eliminated, Kate Fox Lent's, uh, old position, um, what does that mean? If, if that posi, you're not filling in, you said maybe the future city, future city manager may want to. What are we missing out on? What services are not being provided with eliminating that position?
Uh, so from, from my perspective, Kate was really effective in looking, in helping departments strategize about how to change, how to bring in, how to facilitate new ways of thinking, and bring in new technology, and form the link between the department and IT. So we have development, we have a development, a business development person in IT who's more back house, but being able to translate where departments want, you know, meeting with departments, translating where they wanna go, identifying types of software to help them get there, and then, and then developing that through IT was really the link of the strategist. So both in program development in departments, but also in technology, acting as kind of the link with, uh, between departments in our technology division.
And why, why would you not want to fill that? Is it just 'cause we're in limbo and it would just, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you'll find a new city manager very interested in driving that from the central office and, in, in, uh, giving the central office, someone in the central office, the, when that position sits in the central office, it carries a certain level of authority and, and influence.
Got it.
And, uh, and it's really a good way of driving things in the city.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, can I speak from the chair?
Yeah, you can ask a question, 'cause Leo was doing it, that's fine.
Going back to what my fellow councillor said, right, we have twenty-three million dollars. For years I always say, give some back to the homeowners occupied that live in our city. Let's say, would it be feasible for the city, such we have such a large surplus of money, to one year don't raise a tax at all in their house, leave the tax the way it is, and don't increase it for one year? Would it be a feasible thing for us to do, since we have such a lump sum and so much money, and the homeowners of the city is getting hotter and hotter, like my fellow councillor said? It's getting hotter and hotter with them to live, and they have to pass on the cost to the tenants. And by them passing it on to the tenants, more or less what it does, it drives them out faster. So if we have such a large surplus, could we give some back to them? I know what he said is we give a large tax exemption, but that's one thing. What I'm saying is, we have an additional funds, but why can't we turn around and give some of our funds to the homeowner occupied that live in our city? Would it hurt us? What would be the outcome if we have twenty-three million? What would it cost us? Two million? Three million? We still ain't gonna break the budget.
Let him answer, great question, let him answer.
That, that money doesn't sit there. What I, the point that I made earlier is that when we, when you pass the capital plan, we take that money, and rather than borrowing to get, uh, to improve our parks, to drive infrastructure projects here, we're using our cash to do so. So we're not creating long-term liabilities for the city, but we're still driving forward capital projects for the city. It's a balance, that's all I'm saying, is that if you wanna borrow, you know, we still have all these capital projects. We still have hundreds of millions of sewer and water improvements to make here in separating our systems. So if you wanna, you know, it's a balance, it's a balance here about, I can borrow for that. We're still gonna have to do the projects, and we can create ten, fifteen, we can borrow over twenty years, create longer-term liabilities for the city. That's really just a strategy decision.
But I understand. If you ask the second one. You object it? Okay, I'll get off the chair.
No, 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 I mean, Leo was making questions from the chair. As long as it's not the same one, I don't see why he's not asking.
Why, it's a different question. What can I ask? I just one question.
Counselor, I object that you have to step off.
I agree with, with Mr. Keith, with Ned, that there needs to be a balance. So what I would argue is that the, the monies that we have in free cash do afford us the opportunity to spend on capital projects without borrowing, without bonding. It also gives us a cushion, so that if we, we reach a, a situation where we need money, it's there. And the point I'll make is in during pandemic, we had an extra two and a half million dollars in free cash that we were able to, to start the, the emergency line with to support the community. We had it, we had it in stabilization fund, we had it in free cash, and we were glad we did. So yes, there is a balance. We also have revenues that at times can be considered uncertain. We don't know what's happening with the excise revenues during pandemic that went very far down from where it was in the past. We have some budget breakers with the retirement system and the OPEB liabilities that are coming up that are also, uh, health insurance is another. So there's, there's lots that we need to, to balance, uh, on our end as well.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask another question. So, so I'm not disputing anything you just said, okay? It's clear, we have these, these problems that we do. My only point is that it is supposed to be a balance. And so, and, and, you know, the former city manager was very upfront about, I wanna be more aggressive with this capital improvement projects. I wanna, I, I have this money, I intend to spend it on aggressively doing X, Y, and Z. I don't think anybody's gonna deny that. All I'm saying is that that's a lot of free cash. And I think that i- in a, in a kind of fairness, that, that really the, the, the taxpayers, and, and, and by extension, as, uh, as the chair said, you know, people who rent here, who are having a, I mean, the, 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 the price of everything, including rent, is going up everywhere. So, so all I'm saying is, is that, you know, maybe we can figure out something to, dare I say, share the wealth?
You should say that, definitely. Someone get this guy on camera.
That's my only point. Thank you.
I, I just wanna say that I, I understand what my brother colleague is saying. But for me, when I think about like the nineties and us going into receivership, when I think about how big we're getting, and we can't even fit all of our offices within this building, it scares me for us to just give money away, um, or, or just, you know, just because we have it to spend it. I think that the way that we treat, that we share the wealth, or that we treat our residents how they deserve, is in the way that we provide quality service here. And that means not nickel-and-diming people for the smallest in fractions, which I feel is something that we do. I think, I think in order to build morale, I don't think it's necessarily given the free cash money that we have reserved, but it's in how we treat the people who come into these doors and making sure that we're providing, uh, quality service, which I believe that everybody does their, a great job, but we can always do better. Um, I, for one, I'm a little scared about spending that money. I worry about the day that, that we can't afford how big we're getting. That's all I wanna say. Thank you very much.
Regardless of what my fellow councillor said, they asked permission for me to speak from the chair, so I can ask another question.
Just ask it.
Right, 'cause no matter what he says.
Ask it, ask it.
Here's my question. All the time, we come up here, right? And there's always something saying, we need for infrastructure, we need for the water, we need for this. For everything and that, we have a water enterprise fund, we have funds for the infrastructure, but all this time, I believe, this is my own belief, I don't know what my fellow councillors, but my own belief is a simple one. If we have such a surplus, why not give some to the people that invest the most in our city? They're the ones, we, I could see, if it's gonna make us broke, I don't believe in it. But if it's not gonna make us broke.
But what's, what's the question, Recuperal?
The question is, is it worth it? Yes or no?
I think these kind of budget policy questions are the subject of, uh, subcommittees. I, I mean, I agree with you that this is an ongoing conversation, that you, part of what the city manager, city council relationship is, is about, is about setting budget policy. And, uh, and while that, we're a little late in the process here, the, the questions are, are fair and worth, worth deeper conversations.
Is there any more questions from anybody? If there's no more questions? Mr. Ned, you're next.
Yes, I am. So thank you, councillors, if you'll turn to page fifty-four. Page fifty-four in the book is the auditing department budget. You'll see our mission statement on page fifty-four. And so I'd ask, for those of you who don't know what auditing does, uh, you see me once a year go into the side conference room when the auditors come, so that I can be in subcommittee to present our audit. You see me once a year when I'm sitting before you to present the budget. You see me, I think, uh, the last couple of meetings in June, when I come forward to present the thirty or forty cash asks, is, uh, from free cash or salary reserve that we have to balance our books. But auditing does a lot more than that. So we ensure that our financial records are accurately maintained. We monitor the expenditures of all city funds. We maintain the city's general ledger, we manage the city's general ledger. We do accounts payable warrants weekly. We are responsible for all of the accounting functions for the city, so it's not just audit, but it's also accounting. And that's a very big part of what we do. We report as required to the Department of Revenue on an annual basis with seven or eight different reports that are necessary. Yes, we do oversee the independent annual audit, and we do develop the budget. We, as a paramount to what we do, we provide assurances to everyone that, that our finances are strong, our finances are sound. When you saw the audit, uh, last week with the annual comprehensive financial report, at the very beginning of that, we talk about how many years in a row that we have received that report. And we're coming up, when we get our, our award for fiscal twenty-three, we expect to do that, we will have that for twenty-five consecutive years. So that's a major accomplishment, and we're very proud of that. When you look at my goals and accomplishments, so page fifty-six, I'll highlight one key goal that I have in mind to, to point out, what we wanna do in fiscal twenty-four, and that's the accounts payable decentralization plan. And that is to, to, to have departments do the data entry, the electronic data entry of their accounts payable transactions, and let us go into a cross-check mode to review all of that materials that will allow us to have electronic record-keeping rather than paper record-keeping, which we're doing now. So in my budget, in the professional services line, a lot of that money is, is highlighted for that particular purpose. So this will streamline our operations as we move forward, and it will help other departments to, to enter the data more efficiently than they currently do, to send them into us, and then we do all the data entry. So if you'll refer to page fifty-eight, you will see the breakdown of salaries. There are four individuals that we currently have in the auditing department. There is me as the city auditor, the city's assistant city auditor, sitting to my right is Sochetoda. We have a financial analyst, Alicia, and we have an accounts payable specialist, Shayana. So there were four of us. Ned had mentioned at the beginning of his comments that there were new positions, and one of the new positions we're seeking in this proposal is to fund a, a second financial analyst in the auditing department to assist us with the APRA-related activities. So we propose this new position because it will help with all of the previously mentioned tasks that we do that are related to APRA and the capital projects associated with those projects. We have forty million dollars' worth of APRA money, eleven million on the federal side, twenty-eight million on the state side. Those projects are well underway, and we are strained with the operational abilities that we have now. I am proud of my group, they are hardworking, I come to work every day to make sure that we do the best we can, and they share in that philosophy, and they do extremely well. So looking at page fifty-seven, fifty-seven will show you that the salary increases are low, that's one point zero nine. Two of the members of the department are steelworker positions. And I mentioned, I think, early on when we were talking about Candace's department, that the exempt groups were not settled yet, the steelworkers were not, and the library staff was not. So two of the three positions, besides mine, in the auditing department are steelworker positions, so that's why the salary percentage is low, because it doesn't include a, a couple of people that are covered by that union. You look at the operations section, there is a minimal increase in forms, and that is for the accounts, uh, I'm sorry, the forms that we do for the ten ninety-nine tax reporting for our vendor activity at the end of the year. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has on the auditing department.
Any questions on the left? Kelvin Brown.
So you have this goal for the implementation of the decentralization. How is that gonna take place?
We plan to have a, a consultant to assist us with that, but we're, we're trying to work that out. We may end up doing it internally, and if we do, then we, we could, uh, we, we place a lot more emphasis on this new position that we need to help supplement the workforce as we do that. Right now, we're seeking contract assistance from outside sources, outside consultants, to get us off the ground on that. But what it involves is that each department has to have a person that will do data entry into the accounts payable system. Currently, they don't. They have an account inquiry access, and the data entry access is in the auditing department. So what they're doing now is they're emailing all of their invoices and accounts payable vouchers to our offices throughout the week, and we're printing those, and we're stamping those, and we're doing the data entry. It's, it's very cumbersome, it's very time-consuming, uh, we need to do better. The, the Secretary of State's office mandates what record retention requirements are, and we're not able to just scan these items and save them. We have to have a different type of software program that allows for the, uh, data changes to be electronically identified. So if someone, someone was to delete something in the file, there's a timestamp of who did it and when they did it. If somebody is to add something, if somebody is to change something. All of those things are necessary parts of the Secretary of State's electronic record campaign. So.
So I understand that part, uh, but I don't see the expense to cover it. That's where I was getting it.
Oh, so in the professional services line,
Yeah.
we have funded a hundred and eleven, three ninety. So we had supplemented that line last year in twenty-three. The reason you don't see a change from twenty-three to twenty-four is that we've left the funding that we supplemented in twenty-three in place for twenty-four. We don't know how much it's going to cost at this point, but we have supplemented a piece of this for us to get started with it.
Okay.
We may end up coming back for a free cash inquiry or, or supplemental vote.
Okay.
Once we know more about how much it costs.
My question was the implementation, and then I just didn't see the number. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, I, I have a question.
Hi, I have a question. You said that every department has to have a data entry person?
Yes.
That obviously wouldn't be in the 2024 budget, right?
Uh, no, it's, it's part of what they already do.
Okay.
So, so the departments all have a finance person, many of them, those that don't double up with another department that does, but most of them have a, a person who does accounts payable voucher submission to the auditing department. They also have the same person doing payroll submission to Patrice's office for payroll, used to be us, and now it's, it's Patrice's office. So those people are already in place. And so the only difference is, instead of handwriting or typing an accounts payable voucher, which says what line to pay, something from, to whom to pay, and how much to pay, that is all going to be entered into the municipal database.
Yeah.
By the people in the departments, instead of being bottlenecked into auditing and, and entered by our group.
And so, so I worked at the Treasury Department when I was 20, in 2012, and it's so crazy to me that it's still functioning the same way.
Yeah.
That is very frustrating.
Well, we've been understaffed and under-resourced for a long time, so one of the positive things for us was to have the ability to transfer payroll to a different location. When we had talked about that with the former city manager, I had asked for a couple of approaches to that. We had the payroll division assigned to auditing, so we had one person doing payroll for the entire city, we had one person doing accounts payable for the entire city. School department was on their own for, for their work. But I had asked the city manager to consider a couple of things. One was to have the payroll department be a standalone department, have several people in that department, three, and have one supervisor dedicated to that one operation, perhaps combine it with schools. That was one approach. Another was to add staff to it, so we had asked for a second full-time person and leave it in auditing. What was ultimately agreed to was that there would be two positions funded, which you'll, I think you saw earlier tonight, the payroll supervisor and the payroll specialist, and they are now reporting to Patrice and Colleen in the treasurer's office.
Okay. So another question is, how far back will you go? Once the system is established, will you go a year back and put that in the system as well, or are you just going to start?
We're currently trying to scan those items, but I don't know what the capabilities are for how far back we go. In the worst-case scenario, we would start from whenever we start to do the data entry, and forward from that point would be our electronic record retention that complies with the, the Secretary of State's mandate. I'd have to investigate further on what approaches we can take on the previous materials.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any questions on the right? Council Recuperol.
Yes, Mr. President, I got a couple of questions. On this professional service, isn't it easy for you to hire somebody?
It is, it is. It's easier, but we need to, to be cognizant of cost and, and availability. So we have a couple of con, private contractors in mind, but one that we've approached so far doesn't have, have the capacity at this point. We'd have to wait a few months for them to become available. So we may have to do some of the initial steps on our own, and then maybe backtrack to the consultant later.
And another question too, on this OPER fund, right? Says you were looking for an hour, it's vacant, right?
Well, it's not funded, it's, it's not part of our budget now. It's vacant because it's in our proposal to hire. So if the council approves this, we'll be able to hire someone.
Okay, so if you, if you hire somebody, the OPER fund ain't going to last forever?
No, it, it isn't. So we'd have to make some decisions going forward, is, once the OPER funding ends, what's our next step? Do we have the need in our department to maintain two financial analysts? I would say at this point, the answer to that is yes. I don't know after we get past the decentralization of accounts payable and we're able to maybe decentralize some of our, our financial analyst roles, if that will hold true. We may still need it, but that's a decision that'd have to be made later.
So, here's the question I got. This is going to expire, and you're going to hire somebody.
Yes.
Let's say, suppose you're going to hire somebody for that vacant job, right?
Yes.
So when that expires, what happens to that person's job? Does it still work under your department? Or does his job get eliminated? Or do you change it over and bring it to this one here where you're spending $111,000?
Well, I, no, it can't be put into the operations line, because employees can't be funded from operations, um, general ledger lines. They are restricted to the general fund salary lines, so I'd have to bring that person on as an employee and keep that person as an employee, and I'd have to have the city manager's approval to do that, or the council's, or both.
So that, that person, you will keep him?
I'd like to.
Your opinion, you will keep him, right?
I'd like to.
This will be a permanent job?
The way it's, the way it's being.
The money runs out.
Yes, the way it's being presented in this budget is, it's funded by the OPER funds, so it's non-general fund.
Right, but let's see, but, but, OPER's going to run out?
Yes.
Okay, so, you intend to keep that person regardless for OPER or not OPER, right?
It'll be posted as a three-year grant-funded position.
Yeah. But, but, I always hear three-year grant, but when it's funded like that, that job never goes away. It stays, so it becomes a permanent job. So why do you always post it as a three-year fund, but it's actually a permanent job?
But actually, in reality, they're going to hire somebody.
But that's, that's what they should.
So I'm being, I'm being upfront with the council on how I'm presenting it. So it is being presented as a grant position with a, a definite timeline for it to end, which, which Ned mentioned, the timeline that we're working under. We'd have to come back to the council to ask if it can be shifted to general fund and be funded permanently. So that's, that's, we, we would not take the position of, let's fund this temporarily and just keep it. I can't do that.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, you keep them. I've never seen one that's grant-funded.
Well, it's, it's not funded. It's not funded past the grant expiration period, so I can't keep someone without, without funding in the general fund.
But then it comes back, and it comes to us, and we fund it.
Right, it would have to come back to the council, and we'd have to vote on it.
On a future budget, I'd be asking for that, yes.
Right, so it's, it's a permanent job.
Yeah, next question, Council Vito.
I'm glad that you brought up that there's been bottleneck, bottlenecking happening in your department, because it's one of the biggest complaints that I, I have heard. I, I know that people have waited sometimes, weeks, maybe months, for certain things to, to get paid. And so I'm glad that you're moving over to a more digital approach. I was completely flabbergasted when I found out that the city, and I don't know if this is your department specifically, but that we still require a wet signature when there is so much that can be done online. You can go to court online, you can do so many things right now. And so, is the wet signature still something that is being required, or are we going to join the modern world?
I don't think so. We, we have electronic signatures that are being placed on the accounts payable vouchers that are submitted by email to us. We have a combination of wet signature or, or the electronic signature on budget transfers and journal entries. I don't know what, I believe payroll, it's out of my control now, but I believe payroll does allow the electronic signature to be posted as well. I'm not familiar with anything that's requiring. I think we now have DocuSign for our vendor contracts. I do about 300 of those a year. And amendments of about 250, those come out of Booba's department, procurement, and I'm required to sign as one of the officials, as, there were five signatures that are required, but those are electronic as well.
I do, I do know that you have a reputation for being very meticulous.
Meticulous, accurate.
Accurate, and so I just want to tell you that.
Uh, following the rules, making sure that the statutes are followed.
1,000%, and I appreciate that, that's important.
But you can't pay something in advance of receipt.
1,000%.
As the statutes require.
So, yeah.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
It was a compliment.
Thank you.
It was a compliment. Um, so I just wanted to say that, and I'm glad that you came before this council and that you acknowledged the areas where you see opportunities. Because sometimes they, people come here and they're just like, you know, blowing smoke, and, and I appreciate that you came in here being honest. So thank you, and I wish you luck.
Thank you very much.
Budget reserves?
Okay, just a second.
Debt services?
What page, Ned? Uh, I think, I think next is the debt, debt service, so page 231.
Just want to finish this up.
Page 231, this is the funding for our debt service, so this is what we would owe in fiscal '24 for both principal and interest for the debt that we had previously borrowed on. As Ned mentioned in one of his comments about the CIP, we did not have any funding for '24 CIP requiring bonding, so we didn't go out to bond for, for this, those initiatives. So on page 231, you'll see $1,007,000 is the proposed budget for principal and 623 in interest. That's really not negotiable, that's what we are required to pay for all of our bonding. For informational purposes, we have 16.7 million in principal outstanding, so this is not an unreasonable number for our budget.
Any questions?
Okay, so page two.
Budget reserves?
Budget reserves, so on page, the last, last page of the book, 238, this is the line that typically funds salary obligations that have not yet been determined or have not yet been settled. So I mentioned a couple of times already that the steelworkers' union and the, the library union have not yet settled for '24, so we've got some allotment of funds in this line for that purpose. $25,000 of this line is a baseline funding that we maintain for specific purposes. If someone is to get a reclass, a union regarded, reclass from one level to another, how it's funded is through this budget reserve. If someone leaves and has an accumulation of sick or vacation accrual, we may use this line. You see at the end of the year, you'll see this next month when we come in, the end of May or the beginning of June, that we're asking for lines to be settled and closed and supplemented. Salary reserve is one of those lines that we go to for all of those activities. So this $305,000 is an increase from the $150 of the previous year, and that's mostly because there are three groups that have not settled. The, the steelworkers asked me, and I, excuse, excuse me, the exempt group is not a bargaining unit group, but they would not have their salaries set until after all the others are finished.
Any questions to the right, to the left?
But there's a chance that this gets resolved by the end of this fiscal year, and we may not even need to spend that.
Uh, no, because we'd have a retro, well, I don't know.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, I think it depends on, I don't know where they are with bargaining.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah, we're in negotiations with steelworkers right now. We're in our second meeting, and with AFSMI, we start next, well, within the next 10 days.
Okay.
So those may get settled by the end of the year, but they won't be in next year's budget, because we're set on the budget here.
Got it.
So, we'll have to, when you approve the contracts, we'll have to come back next year to vote, to, to appropriate the funds and transfer them from this line to the department lines.
Got it, thank you. Interfund transfers.
Interfund transfers.
Okay, so, interfund transfers on page 237, there are two lines that are funded in our proposal. The first of those, the capital projects line for $1,285, that is the obligation that we have for the marginal street property occupied currently by Enterprise Rent-A-Car. This is by agreement, and this money funds capital and operational improvements to the building and the grounds. The second line, transfer to trust, is the OPEB contribution, other post-employment benefits, other than retirement, that we are funding. We have, I think when you heard the auditors last week on their presentation, you heard that this is a large obligation, and the DOR is looking for what we're going to be doing on funding this. Our plan currently is to shift when the retirement obligation, the catch-up obligation on retirement ends in 2028, we will reallocate those $12 million, or a portion of those $12 million over to fund the OPEB obligation. We have $137 million OPEB unfunded liability that is growing every year as our workforce gets older. The OPEB trust currently has 3.2 million in it, so we're not even close to funding this. We have taken the, the approach of funding whatever we can, when we can, and we've kept mostly to this $300,000 per year funding, with the exception of the pandemic year, we did not fund in that year. So we currently have 3.2 million in the trust fund, and the obligation is 137. So Standard &amp; Poor and other rating agencies like to see us doing something about it. So this $300,000 amount is what we can afford to do now.
Any questions?
I have a question. We're talking about OPEB, and I don't know if the question is for you, but we had a subcommittee a couple of weeks back with respect to the retirement board.
Yes.
If that gets, that would be something that we would appropriate here on the side, if we decided to go that route, or is this supposed to be proposed in this budget?
It depends on the retirement board, if they move forward and send any communication to us, then it would be up to us to either vote, vote it up or vote it down.
Okay, so it wouldn't be in.
It wouldn't be in the OPEB line, that would be in the retirement contributions line, so I think I, I present that, is that tomorrow night or Wednesday?
Okay. Okay, got it, I got my.
So it wouldn't be part of OPEB, it's part of the retirement contribution?
Yep.
And that would have to go first to council for approval, and assuming it's, whether it's approved or not, who knows, but, but then it has to go back to PARAC, because PARAC has to now renegotiate the city's obligation to pay and the school's obligation to pay.
Right, we should be paid up by 2028, if we keep going at the rate we're going.
Yeah. We've tried to keep to that schedule, because it was important to all of us to make sure that that dropped off at that time, so we could shift the funds to something else.
Then we'll have a windfall.
I also want to say, like, compared to when I first started here, you've come a long way with your presentation.
Well, I will say, I will say that that book has some history. So, that last year, or the year before was the first time, but that wasn't actually the first time. 10 years ago, 11 years ago, 12, 2011, 2010, 2009, 08, I used to do a bound book like this. We did an auditing, but we didn't have the resources to continue with it, so it became Excel worksheets.
Yeah.
But this is based off of the earlier version.
It's beautiful, it's so much easier to navigate, it makes this a lot easier.
Thank you, appreciate it. So, I would, I would commend Sochet Toto, our assistant city auditor, for a lot of the work that she did.
Thank you, Sochet.
Because the information has to be accurate before it feeds those charts that are here.
Yeah.
So she did a lot of that work.
Good, thank you.
Seeing no further business, we are adjourned.